All right. I'd like to call to order the board meeting for January 22nd, 2013. And we will begin with the flag salute. Dr. Cash, would you please lead us?
Please stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And as we just heard, we do have Spanish language translation available for anyone who needs it. And tenemos traducción en español para cualquier persona que necesite. We also have headsets for the hearing available. Dr. Cash, introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions?
Well, okay. Our high school open houses begin this month. And as you can see by the list that's before you, both here on the diocesan, available for the public. San Marcos will open its doors tomorrow, followed by Dos Publos on Thursday. Santa Barbara High School will be next week. And La Cuesta Alta Vista Open House will be on February 5th. It's a tremendous opportunity to go and see the great things that are happening in our high schools. As parents and the community get to know our schools, they're, I'm certainly understanding the great things that are happening in our classrooms. Very important event is occurring next week, and that's Tuesday, January 29th. Our district, there's also a flyer for that as well. Will be along with the Santa Barbara County Selpa Office, be sponsoring a workshop entitled Community Education Series Transition Planning 101. And want to make sure that, to invite officially all the board members, if you're able to attend. I think it'll be a good opportunity. Unfortunately, I won't be able to be there, but we will have staff from our, the district office there as well. This event will provide information, help prepare students in creating a path to access their post-secondary goals as they transition from high school to college, or their careers in the world of work. So it's a great opportunity. It's a, I think, a wonderful partnership that we have with the Selpa Office. And continue to engage them and enlarge our partnership with them. And I think this is a good example of the work that we're doing together. Also, beginning in March, our junior and senior high schools will present some outstanding theater performances. And again, we have the flyer available. It's up on the diocesan, well, in the back. La Colina Junior High School will be presenting Aladdin. The Sound of Music will be at Galita Valley Junior High School. In the Heights will be at Dos Publos High School. Santa Barbara High will be presenting Spamalot. San Marcos High School will be presenting Thoroughly Modern Milli. And La Cumbre Junior High School will be presenting Guys and Dolls. All of those represent great opportunities for members of our community to see all the talent that resides in our students, as well as the hard work that they've engaged in in order to make these productions, both onstage and behind the scenes at these great theater events. We have one other item, and we'll, we're gonna wait until the person gets here. So with the president's indulgence, or maybe when that, those people arrive, we could break in and make one final announcement.
I think that would be fine.
Great. Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Board comments and correspondence. Ms. Idelson?
Yes. I just wanted to mention, I attended a college night presentation at Santa Barbara High on January 10th, and was well received. It was a chance for students to pick up their PSAT scores. And then a presentation by Paul Kenark, who, from what parents told me afterwards, was very inspirational to students and parents alike for understanding the college process and, you know, what the four things colleges are looking for. And there was a real consensus to bring him back. And that was positive.
Thank you. Mr. Heron?
I had the pleasure of attending two meetings. One, the Wellness Committee. And I was happy to hear that 92% of our schools are in compliance with the wellness policy. And that's a very high number for this part of the year. But they did have one question. I'll leave this for Dr. Cash. Where does Wellness Committee fit into the strategic plan? Anxious what their role is and what's expected of them. The other was the Special Ed Committee, Parent Advisory Committee. And they had the opportunity to listen to our new Special Ed Director, Ms. Rodriguez. And she gave her history of her life. And it was very emotional and very well received. And it puts in perspective, you know, the leadership of our Special Ed Department. And I was very pleased to be there and very pleased to hear your story and look forward to great things.
Thank you, Mr. Heron. And I would just like to say that in the past week, we've seen some press coverage on the South Coast Youth Gang Task Force Committee, which I'm a representative for our school board. And I've shared that there's an annual report. But I do also want to recognize the work that our district is doing, Mr. Sumter, under your leadership and Dr. Cash's leadership. Because really, countywide, we're being recognized for our restorative approaches component that we're doing, as well as our youth specialists, the Ismael Huerta position. And so I attend these meetings, and more and more districts and other municipalities and other folks are recognizing the work we're doing. And I know that's just the beginning, the starting stepping stone for what other things might come. So, thank you. All right. At this time, we do not have any closed session, any reportable closed session items. We will return to student discipline. And I think we will take public comment.
All right. We do have three people who would like to speak on this agenda item. First up is Cricket Wood. And Ms. Wood, you'll have three minutes, and I'll give you a 30-second warning.
So, good evening, board members and Superintendent and Vice Superintendent. I'm here today to remind you, we recently had a holiday celebrating an important leader in our country, Dr. Martin Luther King, who fought for civil rights for everyone. And I think that it's important that we consider, part of his dream was that children of multiracism, socionomic backgrounds went to school together, grew up together, and lived together. And I want to recognize that the school district is starting to have a bigger goal of having that dream come true in our schools. And I strive for you to continue in your policies to work towards bringing it to more of our elementary schools. Right now, only one of our elementary schools has demographics that represents our school district, whereas all three high schools have demographics that fairly evenly reflect the demographics of our city and our school district. And I think it makes our schools stronger. Everybody's heard that everything I needed to know in life, I learned in kindergarten. There's a lot of truth to that. And if we are going to school with the people in our community that's broadly represented, we learn how to work together, we learn how to learn together, I think a lot of our students are missing out. And I really encourage you, as you go forward in this year, to look at your policies and how you guide the district. For us to work as a community, as one, where we have school, neighborhood schools with demographics that represent our community, and we can all become stronger, and our students can become stronger in that way. And that's what I just wanted to come share with you tonight. So, thank you for your work that you're doing. For example, things like the Parcel Tax Fund and Music Program, where we get programs throughout the districts equally to all students. I think that's wonderful. That's a great goal. And having a strategic plan where we're starting to look at that, that's great. And let's keep working on it. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Cash. And I am the current Monroe Elementary School PTA President. And I'm here along with Cricket to thank you for your adoption of supporting neighborhood schools in the strategic plan, as well as the recent discussion and policies that you're looking at, to support people and families participating in their neighborhood schools, with students attending the schools that are designated for their neighborhood area. I want to offer some suggestions, and I would really like to participate, or see if there's a public forum participation process for parents to get involved in as the strategic plan is implemented, in particular with encouraging people to attend their neighborhood schools. And one suggestion I have for right now, and as discussions that are occurring currently, is that this district take a more active role in relaying information to both the media and the public and parents about the differences in our schools. And I think that there's less differences sometimes than are led on, in particular with GATE programs and test results. I think when I see information in the public and the media about the test results in our elementary schools, I would really like to see it presented in subcategories. I know that information is presented, for instance, when parents ask at the school level. But when I read it in the papers and see the information about one school's test scores versus another's, I think really what we need to do is have an apples-to-apples comparison. We need to show what each elementary school's GATE students' test scores are, which each elementary school's ESL students and non-ESL, and et cetera. That way, it kind of levels the playing field, as far as the, just even the information that's being out there. You, I'm sure, know the discussions that go on at some level, but as a parent, the things that we hear in our communities that are inaccurate, they're inaccurate. And I really think that the district could do more and take a more active role to provide the accurate information. And the other thing is for GATE programs. Every elementary school has a GATE program. And there's differences, but I think that that information is not being as proactively communicated to the public, in particular in the media and with parents, that it could be. And I think just starting at that basic level-
30 seconds.
-could really do a lot, just to get the dialogue going. And then, of course, I'm excited to see where we go from there. And I really, as I said, I'm excited to participate in that. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Reed. Hello, board and district employees. Good to see you again. This is my third visit here on the topic of solar energy. And today, I have a visitor with me, my son Matthew from Washington. And again, I want to request that, at a future meeting, that the board consider discussing adding solar at Washington. And I also make a short announcement that in working with district employees, I'm encouraged to hear that there is information possibly flowing into the district this week about the project. And I'm looking forward to hearing what that is. But I think it's important also that the board be, you know, fully on board on what we can do. And the reason I brought Matthew today is just to demonstrate, on his own, he went online, and he got these little tiny solar panels, which are really flimsy, and I broke the first one I touched. And he put together a 2-volt solar panel, all by himself. And this is the fifth grader in our school. So imagine what the rest of the community can do to build a better future, a more sustainable future. And also, on the desk here is a rechargeable flashlight that you can get from our community Environmental Council, which is another group in our community that is behind this type of technology. And I think if we don't sort of walk in step with, with this technology in this area of our, our world, we'll fall behind. And I'd like to see Santa Barbara Unified School District be one of the leaders. So, thanks for your comments, or thanks for your time.
Ready? Where do you want to go? Well, can we break back to my former-
Yeah.
Well, at this time, I'd like to introduce Hillary Blackerby, who's a senior field representative for DOS Williams, our Assemblyperson. She's here tonight to make a special recognition to former board members, Susan Deacon and Annette Cordero. Susan, would you come forward?
I hear there's terrible traffic. Thank you so much for, for giving us this opportunity.
We got Annette Cordero coming in the back door right now.
Like Superintendent said, I'm Hillary Blackerby, from Assemblymember DOS Williams's office. And it's something we'd wanted to do for a couple months now, but just got the hardware a little while ago. But wanted to thank Susan and Annette for their, their years of service to the, to the district and to our community. And we know your years of service extend beyond just the time you were, you were up here, and we know it'll continue into the future. But I'm sure you're a little bit relieved that you don't have to come every time now. But we just wanted to, to give you from the California State Assembly, a resolution in your honor, thanking you for your, your service to the school district and to the community. And, yeah, keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I would just like to say, this is a real honor, and it's much appreciated. And it's great to be back here tonight. And I loved hearing about the solar project, so keep that going. But I'd also like to thank Assemblymember DOS Williams, who is such an advocate for education and continues to be. And we really have valued so much his efforts. So, thank you again.
And I'd just also like to echo those comments and thank DOS Williams and his office for, both for this recognition and also for his continued support for education, all the work he's done on our behalf. And I echo Ms. Deacon's comments, that it's nice to be back in the boardroom and having just rushed back from Pasadena. But it's, it was nice to be here, but it's also nice to be able to, be able to leave before the end of the meeting. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Please extend, I'm certain, our, all of our gratitude to Assemblyman Williams's office, yourself, for making this happen. And again, thanks again to both Susan and Annette for their incredible dedication to children in our community and students. They've done a lot of work, and I'm confident that we'll continue to do so. So, thank you.
Thank you. So this moves us to acceptance of donations.
Move to accept with gratitude?
I'll second it, but I'll make a comment.
Yes.
And we do this pretty perfunctory at every meeting. But if you take the time to look at the list of donations and the people who are doing it, for the causes that they represent, it's a huge part of our district. I mean, we could not operate without the generosity of so many people. This one just struck me as being extra special. Just a lot of really nice donations to, to nice activities in all of our schools. So, if you get a chance, take a look at it, because it is impressive.
All right. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. Now, we move to the consent agenda.
Madam President, we, I'd like to remove one item from consent agenda item F3. And that would be purchase order number 132878.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Cash. Board members, anything you'd like to pull from the consent?
I'll move approval with that one removal.
Second?
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So we've approved 5-0 vote, the consent agenda. See how fast this can be, Ms. Deacon and Ms. Cordero? You know you missed this. All right. Moving on to action agenda. The first item on our action agenda is acceptance of the Santa Barbara Unified School District's independent audit report for the period ending June 30th, 2012. Ms. Tae?
Thank you. Yes, it's that time of year again. And I have here Royce Townsend from Verenect Trine and Day, or lovingly known as VTD to us. He has been a partner for, with the firm for 16 years. He is a CPA, which specializes in school finance. And he's here to present our financial and our bond audits.
All right. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. Hopefully, you have a few items with you, the financial statements and the bond audits as well. And within the financial statements for your district, I'm hoping you have a separate, maybe four or five-page document. And it's what we call our SAS, our Statement of Auditing Standards 114 letter. And if you don't have it, it's not crushing, because I'm gonna cover, it pretty much emulates the outcome of the audit, save for a couple exceptions, and I can kind of note those with you. So those are the two items that we're gonna talk about. And, you know, I talked about the 114 letter. It's a required communication with, with you, those charged with governance. And of course, the audited financial statements cover quite a few areas, including the financial statements as a whole, the federal program awards that you receive, and as well as the state award monies that you receive. So, as I said, let's, let's briefly talk about the SAS 114 letter. It really covers the outcome, save for two important exceptions, which really have no place in the audit report. And that's whether or not we had any disagreements with your business management during the course of the audit, or if we had any difficulties that we encountered during the course of the audit. And so I'm pleased to say we had neither. So moving on from that, let's talk about the audit report. And I know we have a few new members to your board, so I'd like to just kind of digress just a little bit and talk about the audit itself. It's a process to provide reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are fairly presented. And I say reasonable, because what that means is not total. Total is if we looked at every single transaction. We don't. The auditor's opinion, the highest level of assurance that we can provide you is an unqualified opinion. That's what you're looking for. It goes down from there, and it could get to the absolute worst, which would be an adverse. And I can tell you, I've never, in 16 years, issued an adverse, but I've issued other sorts of opinions. And how we get there through the audit process, risk assessment, we look at all your transactional processes, and we gain an understanding of how they work. And in doing that, we start punching holes in it to see how it stands up through the test of transactional testing on a sampling basis. Once again, we don't look at every single transaction. So, from an audit standpoint, or I'm sorry, from a board perspective, where do I think you should start when you look at your audited financial statements? Well, we have a recap on page 82. So if I can just point you to that, if you have your audit report in front of you. And the great thing about this is it's easy to look at. It's called the summary of auditor's results. It summarizes the outcome of those three specific areas that I mentioned, the financial statement audit, the federal awards, and the state awards. And I'll try to get to that, but that's on page 82. Sorry about the 82. Sorry about that, Conrad. And so you'll notice, for each of those three sections, we're providing you, whoa, a unqualified opinion related to the financial statements with no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies noted. For the federal awards, an unqualified opinion as well. And you'll see the number of federal programs that we actually had to test this year, which was five, which was quite a lot, to be quite honest with you. And then lastly, the state awards, also an unqualified opinion, except for we did qualify one program, which was the ACIS program. And I'll be honest with you, when we have state award qualifications, it's almost always the ACIS program, because a lot of that is really dealt with, you have an outside vendor that you use oftentimes for that program, and it's kind of, that's where the difficulty really resides. So that's the outcome of the audit. Now, the second page, from a board member perspective, that I would always want to review, is the schedule of financial trends, and that's on page 68. So I'm gonna direct you to that page, because this is really the only place in the audit report where you have three years' worth of information. Okay? You have your last three years of actual, plus you actually have now your budget year that you're in, the year that you're in right now, but it's reflected as a budget. So, what would I be looking at if I was a board member, the sort of trends? Well, you would note that under increase or decrease in fund balance, two of the past few years, your deficit spent. Which that, what that means is that you're actually spending more than you brought in. And in the budget year 2013, you're also reflecting that you're gonna deficit spend. But I will note that this was pre Prop 30. So that's probably gonna change things a little bit, because you're gonna have some additional monies there. Are there positive trends here? The, well, this isn't a positive trend. The ADA is, actually, positive is increased, your average daily attendance increased from the 2011 year to the 2012 year. That's a positive trend. However, it's projected to decrease in the 2013 year. And as we know, that really kind of impacts our funding, so that's something that's pretty critical as well. But a lot of information to look at. And I will offer this, I always like to say that I know these financial statements are arduous. If you, as a board, ever want to have a, an hour session where I come in and I explain you how to look at the financial statements, I'd be happy to. And I offer that to all our clients. I just think it's helpful that if you understand your financial statements a little bit more.
And I hate to interrupt you, but we do have a quick question about this.
Just, just related to this, since you're, you're giving us sort of a background in general education on audit right now. Who is it that determines which programs you test? Is it an outside determination of-
That's a great question. In relation to the federal awards, it's, it's impacted by the dollar amount of expenditures. And then we do a risk assessment, meaning in your case, any, let me refer back to page 82, as I say, that's a really good question. So, the dollar threshold to determine on page 82, for the type A and type B federal programs, is 417,000. So, any programs over that, we have to look at to assess the risk. And we have to test at least 25% of all your federal expenditures. So that's how we would go about that. We would look at it from a risk standpoint. For the state awards, the state determines which specific programs we look at. And so that's what we do. And I can tell you, that's, I sit on the audit committee at the state level, so I know which programs we're gonna be looking at on a go-forward basis. So, they determine in advance which programs they want, and it's usually dictated by legislation. If the legislation says that we have to look at it, for instance, your Prop 30 monies, the new monies that we talked about, they will be looked at in the future. Good question. The only thing, back on page 68, that this page doesn't really address and talk to is cash flow. And cash solvency, I'm sure you hear this from your business management all the time, is the most critical area these days. For the past year, the 12, 11, 12 year that you just ended, almost 40% of your monies that you receive from the state were pushed out or deferred to a subsequent period. On top of that, it was deficit-ed or reduced by almost 20%. So if you start with a dollar, and they take off 20 cents, and you got 80, and then they say, hey, 40% of that we're gonna see in a different year, where you're only receiving 50 cents on the dollar. And how you can kind of look to make that point is if you look on, back on page 16, which is your balance sheet, and shows your assets, and I know I'm moving you all over the financial statements. But if you look on page 16, and you look at your assets, and you'll notice that your receivables, receivables are monies you haven't received yet, represent 8.2 million, but that represents almost 65% of your assets. You can't spend what you don't have. Of course, what we end up having to do, because we have payroll and other ongoing operating costs, is we have to either borrow internally from other funds, or we have to borrow externally. So it puts a lot of pressure on our ability to function on an ongoing basis. I would be remiss if I didn't bring up cash solvency as an issue for all school districts, including yours. So that kind of concludes my presentation related to the financial statements of the district. I can move on to the bonds, or if you'd like, I can answer questions specific to the, the district financial statements right now.
How about we take questions for the district? Any questions?
Yeah, I'm not kind of where it is.
You know what it's related to? Maybe I could-
Yeah, it's, it's the whole section on bonds.
Oh. Turn to page 47. And the note disclosure related to long-term obligation starts on page 43. Your general obligation bonds are the first section. They're starting on page 44 and ending on page 47.
Right. I can't, I can't recall seeing this level of detail before.
Oh, okay.
And I can't speak to the previous auditors. But there's a lot of detail, but there's also the information on the capital appreciation bonds. Is this, is this, is that emphasis in here because of all the notoriety that hit the paper recently, or has this been-
No, that's, that's a really good question as well. We're, we're your orders for the first year. So, our firm always discloses, provides a whole lot more disclosure on debt in itself, but particularly capital appreciation bonds, because of the complexity related to those. How you would know, in general, if, if you were just looking- those. How you would know, in general, if, if you were just looking at page 47, and you didn't know what sort of bonds you had there, if you looked at the table at the top, and you saw that column that said accreted, accretion is a component of capital appreciation bond. So that's how you would know, just by looking at it. But you could also look back at the, each of the subsections where we're describing the issuance itself, and it would note in there that there's a capital appreciation component, and what the final maturity value of that capital appreciation bond is. You know, I, but I, hopefully that addresses your question.
Yeah. Do you make any comments on good, bad, indifferent? Are we out of whack, in whack?
Well, no, no. To answer your question, no. I mean, do I bring it up? Obviously, because that's one of the reasons why we disclose so much information regarding those. Each individual capital appreciation bond is, is unique in itself. I have seen some that made all the sense in the world, and I've looked at others and thought, hmm, that's questionable. But your audit function is not the person that you look at in relation to that. It's really your financial advisors in your debt issuances that, you know, you have to place a little reliance on and ask them, why are we turning toward this vehicle of issuance? And they would be best to explain it. I will say this, that these occurred in the latter parts of your total debt issuance, which suggests, which in essence, kind of makes some sense in some ways, because at that point, you're running out of your authorization for debt, and your property values also impact that. And with the declining property value environment, then it kind of impacts your ability to issue debt in the future. So you have to start looking at different sort of tools to continue to issue debt, and capital appreciation bonds are not unique. I get asked the question all the time, how many of your clients have capital appreciation bonds? And I'd say, out of the 20 that have issued debt, 18 of them have capital appreciation bonds. It's not unique to the school district environment, and it's certainly not unique to your district.
Some are better than others, though. I mean, if we, if we were one that had something that was just outlandish, would you then bring that up in your report?
It would certainly be footnoted in here, but since I didn't sit with the financial advisors, because that's not my role, but when they talked to you and said, this is the reason why we're issuing this, this debt, I really wouldn't know why they chose to suggest that this is the tool that they really need to use in order for you to issue debt. In some cases, it's, I will say this, if you want to issue debt, it's almost a necessity to issue, to utilize that tool. But I'm telling you right now, all of them are not the same. They are all different, and they are unique circumstances to each one. Hopefully, that...
Yeah. I just, I just wonder, as an auditor, if we did something stupid, would you point it out?
You mean, would I call into judgment?
Would you point it out, whether making?
Definitely, we point out the fact that, let me give you an example of one in, in here. We would, we would point out the, the final maturity values and something like that. I mean, I don't have a client that where it was issued at a million dollars, and when it matures, it's $400 million.
Right. But if we, if we did?
If I did, it would be, it would definitely be represented in the financial statements. Bear in mind, though, that that same information at some point comes before the governing board when, when you're issuing debt. I mean, that's, that information should be brought forward to you, that this is what we're issuing, and this is the tool or methodology that we're using to issue that debt. It, it should be disclosed to you, and that should be disclosed through your, by your financial advisors.
And I just want to ask a follow-up question related to that, which is, what is your threshold? Because I think that there's different standards out there that tells us what's acceptable debt and what's not. So for example, with the capital appreciation bonds, we know that, at least what I think Mr. Herron is talking about is, you know, pieces that have come out in recent years that kind of say, the ratio is important, the maturity is important, and they've attached a ratio number and a maturity years to it. And is yours consistent with what we've been reading, or do you have a different threshold for what's acceptable? I mean, so at what point would you say this is not a good idea?
You understand that we are not your financial advisors.
Right.
This debt is already issued by the time we look at it from a finance, from an audit standpoint. See, when, when your district issues debt, you don't converse, and no one converses with their audit function regarding the validity of that debt. That's why you have an outside expert, your financial advisors, that are intended to advise you. And you also have your bond counsel that, you know, should be reviewing this. And you have a host of experts that are experts in the issuance of financial instruments. Your audit function is not. We're reporting what has been issued. So ours is always after the fact. We're not, we're not part of that process. That's what I'm explaining.
Right. And I hear you. And I guess I just, when you gave the example of, I'm not working with the district that, you know, borrowed 1 million and is now having to pay 400 million.
Yep.
That was a pretty big threshold.
Absolutely. And what I'm saying is, but if I was working with that district, that would be disclosed. I would have no problem saying that this maturity, or this debt was issued at a million dollars, and when it finally matures, it's $600 million, and it's over 40 years. I would have no problem disclosing that. If any of that was in violation of some sort of law that we're aware of, meaning certain, general obligation bond cannot exceed a number of years. So if by chance we found that to be the case, we would certainly comment upon that as a financial comment. But I'll tell you right now, your, your legal counsel, your bond counsels, your financial advisors, they usually won't let that occur.
Never.
Yeah, they, they will stop that. But from a disclosure standpoint, I have no problem disclosing, you know.
If you thought it was at that horrific direction.
Oh, absolutely. No, I, I have to disclose it regardless.
So because you haven't disclosed it, we can breathe?
Yes. It would be in here, and you would look and go, oh, my gosh.
All right. Thank you.
If that were the case.
If you're following up with that, that's fine. Sorry.
Look on page 47, the second bond from the bottom, 2038 to 2042. Principal interest $10 million, accreted interest to date. Accreted interest to maturity $67 million.
Right.
Current interest to maturity $5 million. Total due, total due in those four years is $83 million. Do I interpret that to mean that we're going to owe $20 million a year to pay that off in 2042?
Each of these sections down here, once you get, debt is required to be disclosed the first five years, and then after that, in groups of five years. So what you're looking at is that, yes, the total debt obligation for that, for those five years, for the one you're looking at, 38 through 42, the principal, including what's already been accreted to date.
Right.
Is 10.7. The accretion that hasn't basically moved over is 67 million. And there's a current interest component to this debt, because this is an all capital appreciation debt that's in here. You also have regular current interest bonds that are in here. The total obligation for this is $83 million. Now, could I say that that would also be $83 million if you didn't have any capital appreciation bonds? Possible. Why would that be? Because your interest rate might be very high on those current interest bonds. And the further out debt goes, the more you pay. It's like a mortgage. You know, if you think about it, if you pay your mortgage, and you pay it over 30, 40 years, and you have to pay it over 30, 40 years, you bought the house for $200,000, but you're paying $1 million.
Right.
It's the same concept here. The interest is the interest. Hopefully, I clarified that a little bit for you.
Ms. Parker, you've been waiting. Sorry about that.
That's okay. We are, on the audit is a separate agenda item, so I just wanted to talk a little bit more, maybe more with Ms. Jete at this point, and partially with you, about this audit report. And we typically have a very low number of findings in an audit report. And I don't know that we've ever had only one, though.
We are extremely proud of that, because we look at an audit as our, our report card. So you're right, we, we did, we did only have one audit, and that was, I mean, one finding, and that was on the ADA on the ASIS program.
Yeah, you know, and I, and I went through my presentation, and I failed to mention that on page 92 is the management letter comments, which they don't raise to the level of being either material weakness or significant deficiency.
And that's exactly what I wanted to ask you about, because this, I haven't seen these, these observations and recommendations to this, and I think that they're, they are beautifully detailed. I, I thought that they were terrific advice, and, and just laid out really clearly. And I wanted to ask sort of, what, what's the threshold of a finding?
Sure, sure.
But then also, just to follow up, the next time we have an audit, I mean, we see all the 2011 findings and what's going on with those, will we see your observations and recommendations in the, in the out years?
Right. In essence, to, for us to put a finding up as a financial statement finding, a federal finding, or a state finding, we would end up having to qualify your report. And so for us, it has to raise to a significant level. The state has a zero-dollar threshold. If you have an issue with them, they want it as a state award qualification. So that's why the ASIS program one is the one that you see up in, on page 85. Everything else that we found, we didn't feel rose to that level where we felt like it impacted the financial statement so severely that we would qualify the report. Because qualifying a report is a pretty significant, I mean, you're really saying that, boy, you have some questions on this. And the number of ASB comments that we had, even though there's a few of them there, we didn't feel as an aggregate, we should qualify the financial statements of the school district as a whole. So that's why we do believe that these are good opportunities for the district to improve in some critical areas. And so that's why, starting on page 92, we had the first one related to the clearing account, we had payroll time card observation that we had as well. And then starting on page 94, through 97, we had ASB observations. Intended, once again, to point out that there are some areas that we can improve on. Our policy in practice will be that, in the subsequent year, we'll go back and we'll visit each of these areas to see where the impact, or have the recommendations been addressed, or has the district looked at those and said, well, we believe that there's some sort of mitigating control that we're going to put in place. And it may not be your exact recommendation, but we think this, this efficiently addresses the issue. But we will look back to see the outcome of those comments in the current year audit.
All right. Well, thank you, because, and I appreciate it particularly with the ASB, because I know ASB, there's just always issues around it, and it's just something that we have to constantly vigil, vigilant on, and, and get new ideas about how to handle it, because it's such a difficult financial area. But I did want to say, you know, so many congratulations to the business office, and also to all the site personnel that are working in, you know, under your purview, because I know, you know, it just takes one person to slip up at a site to end up in a finding. So I know it's the education and training that you're providing to sites, and, and having strong personnel in place.
And I want to, I want to let you know that we look at this manager's letter, and we take these as findings, only lesser findings. We have to respond to the county on these, and we will. And we take all of this like our job is not finished. It's just moved to a lesser import, not importance, but it's not a finding, just like Roy said. But we still look at these because we don't want any of these. We want to come back clean. So that's our goal. But thank you.
Any additional questions?
Just curious, speaking of this, do you look at the last year's audit, even though you didn't do it?
Yes.
Because we've had ASB on every audit.
Right.
And do you look at those to see if those were changed or corrected?
Yeah, we actually, we, as far as those that made the findings, and that was on pages 87 through page 91, we looked at the status of those in the current year. As I said, your previous auditors rolled forward those ASB comments as financial statement findings. We report those as management letters. But since they were in there already, we had to identify the status of those, and whether or not those particular issues had been resolved, implemented or not implemented.
Any additional questions or comments?
I will move to accept the Santa Barbara Unified School District's independent audit report for the period ending June 30th, 2012.
A second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes, 5-0. And now we're moving on to the bond building fund audit report.
Great. Okay, so we have both measures Q and measures R. Now, these reports are a little different, because there's two different aspects of them. One relates to the financial statements of the building fund, but carved out for activity related to measures Q and measures R. And in addition, within each of those reports, we have a performance report. The performance report relates to whether or not, primarily whether or not the expenditures contained within measures Q and measures R align themselves with the bond measure documents. And this is what we call a compliance audit. So for both the financial statements related to Q and R, we have an unqualified opinion with no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies noted. In relation to the performance, once again, unqualified. We found no expenditures that we tested that were deemed to be not in compliance with the bond measure documents. And to give you some information, more additional information, of the expenditures in measure Q, we tested approximately 76% of those expenditures. And for measure R, we tested approximately 65% of those expenditures. We stratify our population by projects. We want to make sure that we test, or we're testing expenditures within all the projects, and we also stratify by dollar amounts. We not only look at the large dollar amount transactions, but we look at smaller ones as well. So it's quite a population of expenditures that we're looking at. You had some comments in the previous year related to measures Q and measures R, and they're addressed within there as well. As I stated, we didn't find any particular issues, but we were happy to see that the issues that were noted in the previous year had been resolved. So that's my presentation related to measures Q and measures R, and I'm here to answer any questions related to those.
Thank you. Board, any questions or comments? Mr. Herron?
Did we get a hard copy of Q?
I don't, I know I got a hard copy of R, but I did see the Q online, so I don't know.
Yeah, I'm just, I did everything online, so I don't know.
We have hard copies. Make sure you all get those.
I'll have to admit, I did not read Q. I presume, when I picked up my copy of R, that was, that was on the agenda. And it didn't say Q and R on the agenda, it just said, I think it said Bond 39, so.
Well, there were no findings.
So hearing no questions, comments, discussion? Do we have a motion?
You know, it was, seemed completely clean to me. I appreciate the hard work on it. Thank you. And I'll move to accept Santa Barbara Unified School District's Proposition 39 Bond Building Fund Audit Report for the period ending June 30th, 2012.
Second.
All right. Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 5-0. And I just want to thank you so much. I think you've given such a detailed and well, just well-informed presentation today. I have to say that it's probably been one of the best presentations we've had, and I really thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I would like to take him up on the offer of a, an hour class.
Yes.
Talk to Dr. Cash.
Yes.
You might want to, the ones I've done, it's usually an open forum, so you, you know, audience, obviously, people can join that. But I'm happy to do that. It'd take about an hour. Do it before your board presentation, if you, your regular board presentation, and it really does kind of enlighten. And I love your questions as well during the course of that. So feel free to reach out to me, and let's do that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we are moving on to the approval of the Single Plan for Student Achievement for all non-charter elementary schools for 2012, 2013 school year. Dr. Cash?
Mr. Handel, I believe, is doing the first one, and then Dr. Drotti, the second one.
Well, you guys got an opportunity today to go through all the, the single plans with the principals. And it sounded like we had a lot of great questions for principals on, on everything from expenditures, to what the plans were, to, to what the focus was for each, each site. And it, and we're real excited to be able to do this again for the second year in a row. I'm not sure what you guys thought about the process, but I'm sure we'll get your feedback real soon. I'm not sure if you guys had, have any other questions about what occurred, what you saw, what you liked.
Mr. Handel, would you like to just share with the public what exactly we did?
Sure.
As, what was the format and what we shared?
So today, from 4:00 to about 5:45, we were in the first-floor conference room right behind you. And we went through every single, single plan for student achievement for all the elementaries and all of the secondary schools in a round-robin sense. So there was six tables where each board, excuse me, five tables where each board member was seated along with a cabinet member. And we had groups of principals strategically grouped to rotate to each table while board members asked varying different questions about their plans to serve their, their students this year. about their plans to serve their, their students this year. During that process, each principal had about five minutes to present their plan, and board members were, were given time to ask a question or two if, if a principal gave them enough time, which I think, I'm not sure if you guys had enough time, but it was, it was pretty fast and furious. So after about an hour and forty-five minutes, each principal was able to have dialogue and presentation with every single board member.
Thank you. Board, any comments or feedback or questions? Dr. Paz?
Overall, I liked it. I thought it was really informative. The one thing, I guess, moving forward as feedback, I would put it in feedback, is that formatting for all the single page, I wish it could be a little more consistent, because some were extremely well-done. I love the formatting, the thought process behind it, and some were a little more open. And so that presented its own challenges, because then you had to try to compare. And there's a desire on my part to look at different schools and compare them in a similar way. It's a little hard to do it when, yes, the questions are all the same, but how they're answered varied. And that is a little challenging when you're trying to read through that many and try to look at trends across schools. So that would be a piece of feedback, and maybe it's something that you all could work on or towards next year.
Thank you, Dr. Paz.
Duly noted.
Mr. Herron?
Yeah, I'll give two things. One, I asked two questions first, so they knew to incorporate an answer in their presentation, because I knew that I wouldn't have time for any questions. And so I asked the same questions of all the groups. I want to say, what is happening regarding inclusion in your school, number one. And number two, the question that some of you heard before, but a lot of you, most of you, some knew you probably haven't. But there's one question in the document that says, what, what barriers, either district or community, are in your way to accomplish student achievement? And every single year that I've been doing this, many, 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 they're just a standard, one sentence, we need money, for state and local. I'm a little bit the opposite of Dr. Paz. I like some expression in some of these. I like to see a personal response to some of these questions. I don't like to see a standard answer that just tells me that somebody's fed them with a standard answer to put in there. And I'd rather see them use some, I know it takes time, I mean, we demand so much, but I'd rather see a blank than a standard, standard answer. So in the future, as we go down, and this is my fifth time I've commented on this, but when, when I hear from the teachers, or, excuse me, the principals, how they answer that question verbally to me about barriers, it is far different than what you see on the written document. Now, I know, I know we don't want a complaint session, but I get the feeling that, I mean, one principal even said, well, I used to answer this quite extensively, but I was told not to, and to stop doing it. But I like to see a little more freedom in, in some of the responses.
Thank you, Mr. Herron. Ms. Parker?
Yeah, just following up with what Mr. Herron said, I did, I mean, that was, it's one of the first areas that I go to take a look at, is the barriers. And I always appreciate it when, when principals do, are honest in that section, because I think that sometimes it can be critical of the district and critical of our policies that we have in place. And so it, I think it's important that we not try to quash that, that we are honest in these single plans about, you know, things that we need to work on. I really, I enjoy this format. I think I needed about five more minutes. I liked the tables where we had three principals coming through instead of four. That was the perfect amount of time, twenty minutes for three instead of twenty minutes for four. So it just worked out better for me. I felt like we all got to share what we needed to share when we had that sort of set up. But, you know, it was, even with four, we, we kind of held on to people a little bit longer and made people wait before they even sat down, but it was okay. We made it work. For elementary, I, I really liked that, yeah, it was very standard in terms of the formatting, so that all of the summaries were at the very beginning. And that's something that I think I'd appreciate for secondary for next time, is that the secondary summaries are at the beginning instead of at the end. I gave a shout-out to, Dos Publos had a different budget page, it was color, and secondary also.
There was a high graph.
And secondary also, most of the budget sheets did not have the, have a total amount. Elementary did, but instead, secondary, most of the columns, it just, you know, it was like all the Title I, all the Title III, but it didn't put it all together. And both for elementary and for secondary, I think that the Dos Publos graph was, was a nice one to take a look at as a possibility. But all in all, in terms of the single plans themselves, I really feel like our principals are, you know, certainly, I'm going to say this is true for secondary as well, but we're just talking about elementary right now. I really feel like our principals are looking at the right things and are spending their money appropriately. And I know that this is something that we have to do annually, and it can be kind of performant, but it's really a great way for us to learn about each individual school and their unique characteristics. So I really appreciated that.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Dr. Paz?
Just to be clear, I was referring to the summary pages, that that's where I felt there was the inconsistency. I do agree with Mr. Herron in that sense that I'd like to see the individual sort of flavor nuances from each of the principals is really great, and you got that sense from the discussions with them, and I would appreciate more of that, because you could see it in the, besides the summary pages, the actual detailed plan. You saw a lot of somewhat standard answers.
Thank you. Ms. Eilson and Mr. Parker?
Yes, being new at this, it was a lot to take in, and, but a very positive experience. And there were some that I would have wanted to spend more time, and others, it seemed like I got a complete picture. And I think we're very fortunate that we have such an engaging group of principals with coming at us with so much, you know, experience and enthusiasm. I just got a sense that the room was full of, you know, just really incredible, responsible, in, you know, on-the-task principals, and that was great.
Yes, I agree that the discussion was at a very, very high level. One thing I forgot to mention, I really appreciated Monroe. They had two pages devoted to special education that none of the other schools had. And I understand she got special dispensation to use that format, but that she won't have to use it again next year. I'd like somebody to look at those two pages and see if there is a way to have all the schools, if it's appropriate, look at those two pages and see if that can be incorporated in some way, because it really zeroes in on special education. And that is a major part of our strategic plan.
Dr. Paz?
Question, how much collaboration across principals and sites do, do the principals engage in before they turn these in, one? And second, how much of that occurs after today?
Mr. Handel?
Well, heading into, when we first started this, this particular procedure, we did it collectively. We sat in a room, and we looked at lots of, lots of areas where, that's where you see some standardized answering, especially as, as areas pertaining to curriculum and, you know, Williams-type findings and what have you. Where you see the variance in, in response, you see individual sites, whether it's pertaining to how they're spending their categorical dollars, what, what types of programs they're implementing, whether it's an intervention, whether they have high populations of English learners at particular sites. So that's where you're going to start to see the differences in the plans. So initially, for the really easy areas to, to go through, you see standardized questions. And then afterwards, you'll see principals working on, like, like schools, Title I-wide schools like Franklin and McKinley and Monroe and Harding are able to look at some of the funding that they're using to, to address certain areas. And they sit down and they talk about certain programs that are working for their site prior to the beginning of the year, as they begin to get some of their results back, but also during the year, when we have our monthly meetings. So what you saw today was a compilation of a lot of collaboration that happens throughout the year, and not just during our formal monthly meetings, but phone calls, hey, this is working for me. Hey, do you know of, you know, something that can address this particular area? So that goes on a lot. To your, your second question, which was, remind me, afterwards, it's, it's, again, it's an evolving document that they, they can't really go in and change the document, but they do gather more ideas. So they begin to, you know, play with certain programs or certain strategies that they see other principals utilizing at their sites, whether it's an after-school program or a specific strategy that they're using at their site, or a specific person addressing certain interventions or what have you. They'll, they'll do that throughout the year, and after, before, throughout the year.
Because the reason I asked that, there was a couple instances at our, our table that one principal looked at, I'm going to take that, I'm going to steal that idea.
Right.
Yeah. And I love to see that, and that's great, because that's a great sharing of information and a good practice.
You'll see that a lot in our, in our district, especially with our principals.
Part of the, the kind of the good thing that comes out of this format is that, to be very frank, principals, and I did it in the old format, principals can't tune out. There's just three of them or four of them sitting at the table. They're listening every, to every presentation. I mean, in a previous format, I remember very clearly sitting in the back of this room, not listening very carefully to what my colleagues might be saying in relationship to their single plan, because they were, it was like the twelfth one that the board was listening to that evening. So this, I've, feedback got from principals is exactly what you've commented on, is that they, they learn, they take stuff immediately away from that, or they learn something that, that prompts them to ask additional questions, either immediately after, or via email that night, or the next day, or at the next principal's meeting. And that closeness kind of creates the opportunity to listen, to be an active listener the entire time.
And I will just add that I, I actually, like Ms. Parker, like the three principals per table versus four, there was just a little bit more time. But, you know, I think we all had a very different approach, because my approach was actually not to let them give me their spiel first, and I went straight into specific questions. And their questions were not the same. And I thought that, for me, I just, I wanted to know something related to what I saw. But as a school board member, the other thing you pick up on are themes. And I can tell you, and I don't know if Ms. Tay wants to jump in, but you, you know, we, in our group, we heard certain themes, some common themes in second grade. And for example, the next time that I'm on a campus, I want to see this three-D program, because it kept coming up. So as a school board, you know, so as a school board member, there, you really do get to hear both best practices and challenges amongst, really, our elementary, junior high and high schools. So I thought that that was really good. And I would also agree that that cover page, I would hope that they, that, and I don't think this happens, that any, you know, it's not just something that's common from year to year, but they really take that as an opportunity to tell the board, here's what you need to know about our strengths and our challenges. And that they know that the board is reading that, and we're looking at the data to either, you know, as evidence to their comments that are made. So I also found those that were much more honest and open helpful, because it, then you, as a board member, can identify, you know, this is how we can help. We do have some control over policy, not over a lot of things, but, you know, you think about it this way. So I actually appreciated that. Yeah. Ms. Eilson?
Yes, I like that you mixed up second, secondary and elementary. And I'm wondering, Dr. Cash, would there be a way to have different principals be seated at the table varying, so that they would, because like you say, they're listening intently to each other also, and then they would benefit by that experience of hearing all of each other?
Yes, we will create a process, and I, where that will allow not every principal to hear every other principal's presentation, but more than just the principals they're with. So I know exactly what we'll do next time. That will be somewhat different. And I also want to comment that, and I can't speak for Dr. Drotti or Mr. Handel, and speak up if I'm misrepresenting, your, your, that at, at no time did I ever inform, ask, or even comment to principals about the barriers to student achievement section in the single plan. So, so I don't know if you guys talked to them about it either. So what you got was what they thought, so.
I'll just say that I think that, that there's a tendency for people to censor themselves. I didn't, I never got a sense that it was, you know, that it's anything directed, but there is a tendency for people to censor themselves. With that, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. I'll move to accept the Santa Barbara Unified Single Plans for Student Achievement for all non-charter elementary schools for the twelve, thirteen school year.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? So hearing no discussion, I will take the vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes, five-zero. And that leads us to the approval of Single Plan for Student Achievement for all non-charter secondary schools for the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen school year. I think we've had a healthy discussion. Dr. Drotti, anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, thank you. I think Mr. Handel and Dr. Cash mentioned a lot of the purpose of the school site plan and the benefits of it. But one, one thing I think we need to remember out of the whole school site plan is, you, I think you alluded to it, Mrs. Lamone, is that if you see themes in the system, that means the district office has influence over, over a school site. For example, if you see three-D, the second grade, that means that's, that's a good district plan. If you see, say, RE-180, there's a theme there. Or if you don't see a theme of, for what I heard personally, is intervention plans for, at the secondary level, for math, I hope you recognize that kind of theme there too. So that gives, that gives us a direction of where to go and, and how to support students, like as an example in math. The school site plan is a great document, because it allows principals, whether it's a new principal or whatnot, to take over a school, given information from the previous years. So it's, it's an extension of years and years and years of work. So it's, it's a great document. So hopefully, hopefully you found the same.
Thank you, Dr. Drotti. Any additional discussion?
I'll just say that I wanted to say a thank you to the site councils for the work that they've done on the single plans. I mean, these are technically speaking, really not supposed to be principal-driven plans. Obviously, principals have a huge role that they play in this, but they're very informed, hopefully, with a strong site council. So thank you to all the parents and teachers that volunteer on our site councils.
And it will be interesting to find out whether we continue to be required to have site councils in light of the governor's budget proposal, which I'll be discussing later.
Okay. Was, did I hear a motion or no? Okay. Any additional discussion?
I, I just want to say thank you for, for all the work, because I know, you know, I look at the pack, and I'm like, whoa, there's a lot of work to be done in all of this, having seen these for the first time. So thank you to each of the site administers and everyone that was involved, and tremendous amount of work.
Mr. Herron?
I'll move approval of Single Plan for Student Achievement for all non-charter secondary schools for the two thousand and twelve, thirteen school year.
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, five-zero. Thank you, Dr. Drotti. And we are moving on to approval of third-grade swim-to-college program with the University of California, Santa Barbara, for Franklin and McKinley third-grade AOK students after school. Mr. Handel?
Yes, so this is just an extension of the program that was initiated this past summer at McKinley Elementary. UCSB, with Britt Ortiz leading the charge from UCSB's side, has collaborated with McKinley and Franklin's after-school program, the AOK program, to engage in the, in the swim program, taking students out to UCSB. The reason we chose the after-school program was because after the principals took a good look at it, they realized they had a large percentage of their third graders that were in the after-school program, and that way they could minimize, minimize the amount of instructional time that would be lost. That being said, UCSB has done a tremendous job in, in coordinating this, but also allowing our students to utilize their pool. They've provided students with the trunks, the swimsuits, the towels, the mesh bags, the goggles, for free. And they give it to the students after they complete the seven- or eight-day swimming lessons. All that the schools are paying for, out of their, out of their either PTA or unrestricted funding, were for the buses. So it's a win-win for both the university, because they get the opportunity to, you know, to find their future stars and have their folks engage in some real great and have their folks engage in some real great, uh, community service, and also for our students to get access to the university, and this incredible skill that I think, I think we all realize is incredibly important when you live here along, along the coast, so that our children learn how to swim at an early age.
Thank you, and I think Mr. Ortiz also does a job with incorporating college-going curriculum in this as well, and getting them onto the USC, UCSB campus.
That's right. The last day will, will include a trip of the UCSB campus. The last time I, I, I heard from Mr. Ortiz, he was in Costa Rica, so I'm, I'm sure that, uh,
He is back.
Okay.
All right, board, any questions or comments? Ms. Parker?
I'm thrilled with this. I think this is a terrific program, um, and I, it fits in beautifully with the after-school piece, because I know that there have been attempts, you know, in, in the past, not with our district, but with neighboring districts and in, in other areas that where they do it as part of the school day, and then there's instructional issues, and it's, um, I'm so glad that this has worked out. You know, my only dismay is, of course, that they have to travel so far. I, I, I wish that San Marcos or Santa Barbara High, or one of the city pools had time, but I understand that they don't have time. I so appreciate UCSB doing it. It was funny, cause I was taking a look during this going, why doesn't SBCC have a pool that we could, I was like, there's, there's a hole. Um, but, uh, I think that this is great and such a need, and I hope that we can expand it over time to more students.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Any other comments? Ms. Idelson?
I, yeah, also, want to second that it's, it sounds so positive, and I just want to be sure it's totally safe. That's, I mean, as a parent, and we all know that how quickly a child drowns, um, what, as far as the ratio of the teachers or supervise, supervision is to, per student, and that they're extremely well-trained and everything required?
I got to go to a couple sessions, and there were so many staff members, and they were strictly assigned to certain students that they kept together, and this is after they did a brief assessment of the student's swimming ability, and at that point, they would break out into groups. I don't think you saw anything larger than five in a group. Uh, it's, it's very well-supervised.
And how deep is the pool they're in?
It's an Olympic-sized pool. It's, uh, anywhere from, uh, probably about 10 feet, but the children only venture into that side of, that end of the pool if they've demonstrated that they could swim in, in that deep of water.
So they're able to stand where they're initially being instructed?
Yes, it's very shallow for most, the majority of the, the distance of the pool.
Okay, and if there were situations, say, where a child potentially had seizures or anything that would make it potentially a dea, more dangerous for them, what, what clearance are they going through before they're allowed?
They gather all that information beforehand.
Thank you.
Just so you know, I, I sent my own son to this, a similar program at UCSB during the summer. They're very well-supervised, left him there for, you know, a few hours, for a whole week, so.
Any other questions or comments? Dr. Bass?
Just adding to that, when I was a kid, I was out at UCSB doing exactly the same thing. So, um, I'm testament that, yes, it's a good, it's a good, good thing to do, yes.
I'll move to approve the Third Grade Swim to College Program with the University of California, Santa Barbara, and much gratitude to UCSB for working with us on us, working with us on this, for Franklin and McKinley Third Grade AOK Students After School.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Handel. Dr. Cash, approval of Board and Superintendent Protocols?
I want to thank the board for their great work at our Governance Workshop, um, this month, and, um, these protocols were put into the themes that I think most all board members thought were the best way to look at them, um, because they are, they, I think they're in good parallel construction mode with board will do and superintendent will do. Um, and so they're, since we did have a lot of discussion about each individual one, they're presented tonight for approval, and if they are approved, we'd make sure we post them on our website and announce to the community through eNews that, uh, the Superintendent Board Governance Protocols are on the website.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Board, any questions or comments? Ms. Parker?
Uh, just thanks to Dr., um, I'm thinking Rudy Acosta.
Castre.
Um, for his great work in shepherding us through that. He's always been wonderful when he comes to speak to us and work with us through it, so I thought it was a good process, and I appreciate what we have, and I hope that the public will take a look through. Um, it, there's not a lot of changes from the last time that we did it, it's more organizational changes, um, but I, I think it's really important that we review these annually.
And I would, um, I would agree with Ms. Parker. I think it's, um, important that we review them annually, and I hope that the public does look at them, because so often they wonder what's the role of a board and what's the role of a superintendent, um, and so this, this is our way of, uh, sharing with the public how we interact, how we communicate, and who's responsible for what, so I think, um, that that would be a good document. The only thing I'd like to add is, um, can we add the logo to this document, our school district logo at the beginning, before we put it on the website?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Herron?
I'd like to comment that it's especially nice to do this with two new board members, because that helps us all work together as a, a team, understanding what the protocols are and our relationship with each other, and, um, it, it makes for a good working team, and those school districts that have a good working team succeed. If you don't have a good working team, um, the results are not nearly as good. So, I would hope that if any of these protocols you look at and see us in operation, and all of a sudden say, hey, we're not doing it the way the pro, protocol says, that any one of us would speak up and, and say that.
Ms. Idelson?
I thought it was a fabulous process, just in the sense that I learned, you know, like you say, the role of each, and then so important, the communication, and I think it brought it all up, and the facilitator was very good at working with the board and superintendent, thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Aye.
All right, Dr. Bass?
I put forward a motion to approve the, the protocols, um.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes five zero. And this, we are now on to student discipline. Um, so we, first we have student discipline reentry cases, numbers 11 slash 12 dash 24, and 11 slash 12 dash 30, and 11 slash 12 33. Board, any, Ms. Parker?
I'll move to approve the reentries for 11 slash 12 dot, uh, dash 24, dash 30, and dash 33.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Now we have board action on student disciplines, uh, discipline cases, 12 slash 13 dash 06, and 12 slash 13 dash 10.
I'll move approval of, of the panel's recommendation for one school year, uh, well, let's see. Oh, that's right, stipulated agreement for, um, suspended expulsion for, uh, one school year, excuse me. The fall semester expulsion, suspended expulsion for the spring semester for 12-13, ending, uh, June 2013.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Now moving on to discipline case number 12 slash 13 dash 10.
I'll move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel?
Do we have a second? All right, thank you.
Is that for one school year, which ends June 2013?
Yes.
Ms. Idelson? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes five zero. And now we are moving on to our conference agenda, and we have a presentation to the board, um, about enrollment trends in South Coast schools and school districts.
Like to introduce, uh, a great supporter of public education in our community and a former student school board member, um, Dr. Lanny Evenstein. Lanny, thank you for coming.
And regular school board member.
Thank you, long, long ago. You know, I, I was thinking on the way down that I actually attended my first Board of Education meeting in this room when I was a sophomore in high school in 1975, which is 38 years ago, so it's been a long time since I've had the,
Well, welcome back.
Thank you, good, always good to be here. All right, um, well, I, uh, have, have long been interested in enrollment trends in local schools, and, uh, I, I think that it's valuable on occasion to, uh, review them. It's, uh, information that, uh, is more valuable from a long-term perspective than on a, on a day-to-day, uh, basis, but nonetheless can, can help to, uh, guide decision-making. And, um, I think we had six charts, is that right? And, and see if we can put those, um, six charts up. The first one was 1.1 births in local hospital, okay, great. Okay, yeah, I can look right there. And, uh, just say President Lamon, members of the board, and Dr. Cash, um, the, uh, enrollment, looking forward at the district in terms of what, what seems to be likely in the coming years, is that enrollment will probably be stable, um, at both the elementary and secondary levels in the coming several years. It may be up 100, uh, 150 or 200 students, something like that, across the districts, as was the case this year, but as a, as a general trend compared to some of the, um, enrollment fluctuations that have occurred in the past, um, the, the enrollment will be, will be relatively stable. Um, looking forward, somewhat further down the line, and this is what really prompted, prompted this report, was that, um, it's probably the case that starting in about five years or so, we'll see some declines in elementary enrollment, which then in 10 years or so would, would show up in the secondary district. But that, that's a long time from now, and, uh, by the time we're looking at the high schools in terms of, we're really, we're talking about very stable enrollments for the next dozen or 13 years. And, um, so that's sort of an overview of what enrollment trends look like, uh, in, in the, uh, in the Santa Barbara Unified School District. And, uh, this first chart was, uh, births in local hospital and K-enrollment five years later, and, and the ratio, and there's data available which goes back to 1983, and this includes both St. Francis and the Galita Valley Birthing Centers, um, so those, those numbers, we've, several years ago, Kate Parker made a question about that, and I responded something. She said, no, I, I had a child at St. Francis that year, so the point was, we clarified that data.
I'm laughing at that, Dr. Evenstein, and appreciate your making sure that was included.
Yes, right, absolutely. And, um, it, it really is the case that enrollment follows, uh, birth trends by, by a number of years. I mean, taking a longer-range view, we, we had the baby boom, uh, after World War II through early 1960s, uh, that was followed during a period where schools were opening, uh, and, uh, then, uh, we had the birth dearth following the baby boom. We had a period in which schools closed, and, uh, the Santa Barbara, the old Santa Barbara Elementary School District reached its enrollment peak in the late 60s, and then, as I said, as enrollments went down, in 1973, Jarf, uh, Jefferson and Garfield Schools closed, in 1979, McKinley, Lincoln and Wilson Schools closed. Uh, in 1985, as enrollments went back up, McKinley School was reopened, uh, and then in the 1990s, Santa Barbara Charter School, uh, the Caesar Chavez, now Adelante Charter School, and the Santa Barbara Community Academy all opened. So, the, the school facilities really have followed, um, what those birth trends are. And, um, as you can see, starting back to 83, if we can, oh, just go back a little further, yeah, okay, that, you can see that births did change over time, in terms of from 2,570 to, in 1989, 3,200, 1990, 3,400, um, and so forth, 93. The ratio, and this is across all, uh, elementary districts on the South Coast, has, has nonetheless stayed relatively constant between about .568 and .611 on this first, uh, num, uh, data presented, and if we can go up on that. Um, similarly, then you can see the data through 2002, the numbers of births go down a little bit, and then five years later, the kindergarten enrollments also go down slightly. Okay, then if we go through the present, 2003 to 2012, uh, we can see that there was actually, 2006, 2007, 2008, a little bit of an increase in births, uh, that we have seen in these recent years in the Santa Barbara Elementary District, as far as the old elementary district, but at the elementary level, of, of enrollment going up. But looking to the future, it's very interesting, is that starting in 2009, as you can see, whereas births had been, uh, somewhere in the 2,700 to 2,900 or so area, in 2009, we're looking at 2,591, uh, 25, let me see, 25, yeah, 91 births, and then 2010, 2,476, 2011, 2,384, and 2012, uh, for the first six months of the year, uh, which is all we have data for at this point in time, uh, there were, there were only 1,082 births. So, this is a major change in, uh, projection from what the State Department of Finance was, was projecting, uh, several years ago, where they foresaw continuing increase in, in the number of births, but at least at this point in time, um, probably largely for economic reasons, uh, births have declined, and that's a trend that holds true not just in our local area, on the South Coast, but for Santa Barbara County, the state of California, and even the nation, so maybe we can look at chart 1.2. Okay, um, let's see. Or, yeah, great, all right. We can see if we, uh, take it fir, we can see, same sort of detail at the state level as existed in Santa Barbara County, with some increase in births in the, uh, 2004, 2005, 2006, 2007 period, uh, compared to some of the earlier years. But then, uh, and then, put it up a little further there, you can see that in recent years, whereas there were statewide, there were 566,000 births in, uh, 2007, at the statewide level, that declined to 551,000 in 2008, 526,000 in 2009, 509,000 in 2010. So we see the same trend toward declining births, particularly in the last three years or so, at the state level, and then also, if we look at the county level, we see that in, uh, 2007, there were 6,289 births in Santa Barbara County, and that number then declined, uh, well, it was, was up in 2008, but then in 2009 and 2010, it, it's declined again, so, and to a lower figure than it was earlier. So, um, as you, and, and as I said, I, I will conclude with some policy observations, is that as you think about the district in the long run, if these trends towards lower numbers of births continue, that will be a very strong indicator as to what future enrollment, uh, in the district is, is likely to be. So, and any, that those are trends that are, are changing, that are apparently changing and are different than earlier projections, and so I thought you would, you'd be particularly interested in them. Okay, we have 2.1, chart, 2.1. Okay, this is enrollment in South Coast School Districts, and I want to move now to talking specifically about the Santa Barbara Unified School District. Um, you know, I've always wondered, what proportion of students are in the Santa Barbara Unified School District compared to the other public districts on the South Coast, Carpinteria Unified, and then, uh, the other, uh, Galita Union, Hope, Montecito, and Cold Springs? And it's, it's, it's almost exactly two-thirds of all public stu, school students on the South Coast attend, uh, schools in the Santa Barbara Unified School District. So, no question that, uh, uh, that it's the largest district by far in the South Coast. As you can see, Galita Union is second, but it has a mere six, has, has less than a quarter of the students of the Santa Barbara Unified School District. Um, Carpinteria, the other unified district on the South Coast, has about 10% of, of the students on the South Coast, which really means that about 90% of students on the South Coast are within the boundaries of the Santa Barbara Unified School District, either, uh, in the district schools or K6 in, in some of the other feeder districts. And you can see that, um, uh, what, what the percentages of students are in, in the other elementary districts in the South Coast. Um, 22,930 public school students on the South Coast in 2011 and 12, and, uh, two-thirds of them are in the Santa Barbara District. Okay, and then chart 2.2 is elementary enrollment projections in the Santa Barbara Unified School District, and this only goes through to 2021-22 because of uncertainty about what birth rates are going to be in the future, in terms of, we can, we can project that far, I think, but in terms of trying to project further than that, it's more in terms of, we can, we can project that far, I think, but in terms of trying to project further than that, it's more difficult. And as you can see, uh, looking at twenty sixteen, seventeen versus twenty eleven, twelve, really enrollments aren't going to change that much in the next, in, in those five years. That's already four school years from now, since we're already in twenty twelve, thirteen. That's the actual figures for twenty eleven, twelve. So looking forward, um, four school years, few schools enrollment will be up or down slightly, and, and that's always subject to change over time. But if we can look now at the bottom figure, um, as you can see, if we have five thousand seven hundred and sixty students in twenty eleven, twelve, in twenty sixteen, seventy, uh, seventeen, we're probably looking at fifty-seven, ten. So, so not much change at the elementary level. There might be an increase yet for a couple of years, and then a decline for a couple of years, or something along those lines. But looking forward five more years to twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, at that point, you will have these smaller kindergarteners, uh, smaller kindergarten classes coming into the district, which then will lead to, uh, uh, smaller upper-grade classes, so that there should be, in that sort of timeframe, a decline of, of, of seven hundred students, or something along that time. So it won't be a, I mean, i- i- if, if the, if the birth trends continue as they have, um, that'll be a, that'll, you'll, s- starting some, you know, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. As I said, I've been attending these meetings for thirty-eight years, so, you know, it just seems like, you know, no time at all that those numbers will be changing. So in any event, um, you know, the, uh, you know, I, I, I think that, uh, to, to keep that number in context, uh, the lowest enrollment for the Santa Barbara Elementary District in recent years or decades was in nineteen eighty-three, eighty-four, when it reached its low of three thousand six hundred and eighty-five students. And, um, you know, once again, even, even five thousand students is a long way from that. So that, but that's sort of a trend line of what we're looking for in the elementary district, basic stability over the next five years or so, with then some decline likely after that point in time. And if we go to two point three chart. Okay. And then looking at the, uh, Santa Barbara Unified School District, the element, uh, the secondary projections, in this case, we can go five years further out because those are more kids who've already been born. So it's not projecting on the basis of, of hypothetical, uh, future enrollment. If you look at the bottom, once again, that's probably the best, maybe we can, yeah, okay. We look at where we were in twenty eleven, twelve at nine thousand five hundred and forty-four, go five years beyond that, nine thousand four hundred twenty-five. Five years beyond that, that's ten years from now, or nine years from now, nine thousand three hundred and seven. And it's really only fifteen years from now or so, a dozen years from now, that we'll, we'll start to see enrollment go down. And, um, as I said, I, I, I hope that this is information that may be of interest to you in your, your long-range facility considerations. And, uh, I just wanted to remark briefly on some, uh, trends with respect to socioeconomic status, and then, uh, location of students in the community of Galita compared to Santa Barbara. And then if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to respond. When, uh, one of the areas I think the Santa Barbara School District has, has been very effective on in, in recent years, recent decades, is trying to have, uh, uh, almost equal socioeconomic balance at its high school level. And this is something that was not always the case in terms of, if you look at nineteen eighty, uh, for example, each of Dos Pueblos High School and San Marcos High School were thirteen percent, um, uh, Caucasian, uh, excuse me, thirteen percent minority at a time that, uh, uh, Santa Barbara High School was forty-three percent minority. And flash forward, uh, thirty-two years to twenty twelve, thirteen, and we see, uh, Santa Barbara High School at sixty percent minority, Santa Bar- uh, San Marcos High School at sixty-five percent, and Dos Pueblos at fifty-seven percent. So really very comparable socioeconomic balance at the high school level. And I, I think that's a great accomplishment of the district and, and one that has been achieved through, uh, through, through many Boards of Education and administrators over the years, working toward that as a conscious goal. And, uh, the community itself has become much more socio-economically balanced across the community. And once again, looking at this, uh, from the perspective of, uh, uh, the Galita Union School District, in nineteen eighty-five, the first year for which there's data for Galita uh, that, that's available as to ethnicity, it was sixty-nine percent Caucasian, whereas in two thousand and eleven, it's thirty-eight percent. So much bigger change in Galita proportionately than in Santa Barbara. Likewise, in the Hope School District, uh, and this, uh, as, as someone who's looked at these trends for many years, this really interested me, was that in nineteen eighty-five, the Hope District was eighty-five percent Caucasian. In two thousand and eleven, twelve, it's fifty-four percent. So the same sort of trend that we see towards greater diversity across the area has really resulted in greater socioeconomic diversity in our schools. Cold Spring and Montecito Union School remain socio-economically isolated schools. The Carpinteria District has also become much more diverse in recent years. Just two other quick trends. One is that, uh, in the early seventies in Galita, there were more than seven thousand elementary students in the Galita Union School District. At a time, there were about seven thousand students in the Hope, Santa Barbara and Montecito School Districts. Flashing forward to the present, um, there's now about thirty-six hundred students in the Galita Union School District, literally about half the total number of students. But there remain about seventy-four hundred students, more elementary students in Hope, Santa Barbara and the Montecito District than there were in the early seventies. So that's really a way that the community has changed. There's far more students in the Santa Barbara, uh, area, in the immediate Santa Barbara city area proportionately of all students than there was in the earlier seventies. Another change that has been experienced in recent years uh, is that, uh, there's been decline in private school enrollment. Um, this is perhaps particularly noticeable at Montecito Union and Cold Spring, which have had increases in enrollment that certainly are not related to, uh, changes in birth rate or, or number of kids in Montecito, but is also a trend in other, in other districts as well. So that we actually have probably a higher percentage of students who, of all students who are on the South Coast who are enrolled in public schools than has been the case in the past. So those, that's a trend too. There's more students in the Santa Barbara area compared to, uh, compared to the past. And there's also a higher percentage of students in the public schools than have been in the, in the past. So finally, I just wanted to, to, to reflect briefly on what, uh, some of the policy implications of all this might be. And so maybe we can put up chart seven point one. Okay. And this is the average size of elementary schools in twenty eleven, twelve in the, uh, in the various districts on the South Coast. And if you'll notice, Santa Barbara Unified School District is number one, but, but this may not be one of those categories where you want to be number one in. The, uh, these are geographical attendance area schools, and, and Summerland Elementary School is not included, although it is a geographical school. Um, and neither are, uh, for example, Santa Barbara Charter School or Open Alternative School, uh, or, um, uh, the other, uh, schools along, along those lines. And so this is really attendance area elementary school size. And as you can see, the Santa Barbara Unified School District is somewhat higher in enrollment than every other district in terms of, compared to Galita, almost, almost a hundred thirty students on average more. Compared to Hope, almost two hundred students more. Compared to Montecito, about a hundred students more. Compared to, closest to Carpinteria, uh, in, in enrollment. However, um, this doesn't include that, in the case of the Santa Barbara Unified School District, there's one, uh, non-attendance area school that's located on an attendance area elementary school, that is Adelante, which is located on Franklin. If you added those students to that attendance area, uh, to that, to the, to the Franklin enrollment, that would actually raise the Santa Barbara average size to five hundred and sixty-one. So it really is the case that, um, the, the size of the elementary schools in Santa Barbara remain larger than, than other schools on the South Coast, and that's because the district closed, uh, those elementary schools in the nineteen seventies when enrollment was declining. And, uh, so, so what, what are some policy implications of, of this data? The first is that, uh, it, it seems to me that the district is, is well-positioned to attempt to replace portable classrooms with permanent classrooms on, on all of its sites and as much as possible. Because I don't think there's a case that, uh, there's going to be a need to build additional classrooms on really any of our, our sites. That may always not be the case on one or two sites for some reason. But in terms of as a general rule, particularly given the enrollment decline that is likely to occur in, in the out years, I think that the district could, could safely at this point in time, attempt to replace existing portables with permanent, uh, classrooms. And that would, that would suffice more or less for permanent capacity, uh, in the Santa Barbara Unified School District. Along these lines as well, in terms of looking at trying to, uh, secure school facilities, not just for what's going to happen on a year-to-year basis, but what's going to happen on a decade-to-decade basis. There's the former Santa Barbara City Redevelopment Agency site on Cae Caesar Chavez, which the, uh, district has indicated interest in in the past as a result of, uh, the thought of being able to move the maintenance and operations, uh, department there at some point of time, which would create more opportunities in the long run at this site. I know that's a very cumbersome and, uh, complicated process. But it is something that I think that truly looking at the average size of our elementary schools that, uh, compared to the other districts, that, that that, that would remain a, an excellent long-range move if it were possible in terms of, and timing and other factors may lead that to be possible or not, but it, it's certainly a, a possibility that should be considered. A third facility issue is, uh, the four portables at Franklin Elementary School, which I'm, I, I know you're all very familiar with and, and have had uh, agendas, uh, agenda items on recently where you've been in discussion with the city. But I, I do believe that in the long run, uh, there will be the space at Franklin School such that those four classrooms would not be necessary for Franklin School. And I don't know if that'll be by twenty seventeen or not, but, um, I, I do think it'll be possible at some point in time in the future. And, uh, the possibility of removing those four portables is something that should be considered. And, uh, then the final, uh, policy implication might be to, uh, along this line of trying to look at long-range facility requirements in the district is, uh, is consider, once again, the National Guard Armory, that great site between Santa Barbara Junior High School and Santa Barbara High School. Certainly, if that came into the public domain, uh, there would be many opportunities that would be created, both in the long run and the short run, for school facilities at both the elementary and secondary levels. Just conclude on the thought that although, uh, birth trends are, are trending down right now, I, I believe that it's likely that at some point in time, those trends lines will turn around and head back up again. And, uh, taking a look at the long-range facilities, uh, needs of the district is certainly, uh, something that, that's important to do. And, uh, if I could answer any questions or respond to any comments, I'd be happy to try to, to try to do so, so.
Thank you. That was very informative. I appreciate the information. Board, any questions or comments? Ms. Parker?
Um, I could probably spend another half an hour with you, Dr. Evenstein, just on this. So I'm going to try to restrain myself. One, one, uh, comment I, I appreciated that you, you're talking about the private school information. I'm certainly hearing anecdotally that local day schools are often struggling financially now. I'm sure that that's partially economic, um, as parents have less dollars to spend on private school. But I also hope that, uh, local parents in any of our feeder elementaries and in Carpinteria are finding that their public schools offer the range of options and quality of education that actually is superior to things that they can pay for in, um, some of our local day schools. So I, I, one question I had is, do you happen to know the percentage?
Yeah. This was actually from the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, and they had done research on, uh, in enrollment decline at the elementary level. But it's down, and I'm, I'm afraid I don't have the exact data in front of me. But, but it's down hundreds of students in recent years. So I mean, there's no quest- I mean, there, there's no question that if you look at the, uh, the private schools on this, and I, and I want to say, I agree with you too, in terms of, I think it's, it's a, uh, a, a reflection on the quality of public schools in our area, that an increase in proportion of students are attending them. And, um, we see that at the private level, enrollment is down by, by some hundreds of students. So I, but I can't tell you an exact quantification.
All right. I'll follow up with you to see if you can find that out for me. Uh, another quick question I had is, um, uh, this is the co- the, when you're talking about the birth to, um, kindergarten enrollment, it's the cohort survival method. And I think that traditionally, the district has used that to project enrollments, um, maybe with a year or two here or there where it was not used. And, and I can see that it, it, it is pretty decent at, at projecting enrollment, but obviously not every child, not every kindergartner that comes here was born on the South Coast. And I'm wondering if you've ever drilled down the level of looking at, at our actual enrollment, like this year's kindergartners, which percent, what percentage of this year's kindergartners were not born in the South, on the South Coast? And then, um, you know, how do larger national and international trends in terms of migration affect us? Do you ever, you know, have we ever seen other, other trends besides just local birth rates, um, play out, uh, in terms of enrollment?
Great. Yeah. Well, it's, it's something, I, I, it's sort of related to that. I, you know, I've, I've wondered, why is it that, you know, there's this consistent forty-one, you know, percent or so? I mean, you know, it's, when you add up all the districts on the South Coast, it's not close in terms of, you know, why is it that only, you know, you know, fifty-nine percent or so show up five years later? And, um, what I think some of the answer is, is that, of course, some students, it's, once again, not, not a great number, but, but some students would be attending a private school and a kindergarten. But I think that Cottage also takes in a larger area than just the South Coast. So it's something that, so, so that makes it somewhat difficult to track through. In terms of at this point in time, I don't, I don't have that data in terms of current students who are born at Cottage Hospital or in the, on the South Coast. In the past, when it's been looked at, and I can remember some years ago, this would have been, you know, more than ten years ago, but in any event, it, it was a surprisingly high percentage of students had actually been born in this community. And what, what's significant about that is that I, I think that sometimes there's this view of Santa Barbara being, you know, the home, the, the nearly dead and the newlywed, or something along those lines. And, and maybe that's what it was thirty or forty years ago. But, I mean, in truth, it really is a vibrant family community in terms of particularly the Santa Barbara city area. If you compare, if you, if you think that there are about as many students today, or even slightly more perhaps, than there were in the early seventies, that's, that's really interesting. And the fact that we have a larger percentage of those students in the, uh, public schools, with a lot of those kids being, uh, born in, uh, in Cottage Hospital, I, I think that there are opportunities for the Santa Barbara Unified School District that other districts that don't have, that don't have as much community stability as we seem to have. So that's a very qualitative answer rather than a quantitative one. But, um, you know, on, on issues of migration, in, in terms of, uh, external migration to California, to the United States, that's clearly declined, uh, with the decline in the economy. So it's, it's something that there aren't as many people moving in. And yet, at the same time, there does seem to be a, a slight outmigration of families, something like one percent a year or something like that. Uh, or, or one, let me see if I can find, in, in any event, it, 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 looking at the Santa Barbara County Association of Government, uh, projections, as I say, it, there does seem to be a slight outmigration trend as well. So, but, but as I say, I mean, what's, what's interesting and what's really different about this area is that so many kids are born in this community, they go to schools in this community, and, uh, um, you know, and, and such a high percentage of them go to our public schools in this community. And two-thirds of them go to the Santa Barbara Unified School District. So I mean, the point is, this really is, this is the central family institution on the South Coast in terms of, and it really is in terms of, this is the institution that more families' lives are involved with than any other. So I hope that's a little response.
It does. And then I'll just finish with one final thing. You brought up a number of, of policy and, and possibilities for the future. You know, the other thing that we may look at at some point in the future, depending on how, you know, how things play out with student funding, which is so in flux right now, it's crazy, as I'm sure we're about to hear, Dr. Cash. But, um, you know, it's looking like there may be more physical capacity for transfer students. And so if we're looking at that as an issue, as something that might be beneficial to the district in the future, that's something that we can talk about too. talk about, too.
Board?
Just a question. 50 years ago this year, we purchased 24 acres for a junior high school in Galita. When are we going to use that property?
Good question. I don't think ever, and I think that would be another good point, that both the surplus junior high parcel in the secondary district and the vacant elementary site in the elementary district, very unlikely ever to be used for schools, doesn't mean they might not be used for school purposes of some sort, but in terms of being required for elementary or junior highs, particularly given those locations, I would say those are surplus sites to the district and, you know, really would be benefited if the district is able to dispose of them and get other financial resources from them in some way. I don't think, as I said, no one can tell decades from now, but at least for the next several decades, it doesn't appear that those sites are going to be required.
Ms. Edelson?
I just had a question. Any changes with transitional kindergarten numbers or anything that could be?
I'm not familiar with that.
Okay, because that would come in, what, about a year earlier potentially, or might be interesting to look at? But this was really good information, very interesting to study.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I just want to thank you. I think I also appreciate recommendations, and I do actually hope that we'll look into some of these recommendations, should funding be such in years to come, because I think that they're good recommendations and they're projects that several of us on the DIAS would like to see happen and occur in our district, so thank you very much.
Great, great. Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Right, Dr. Cash?
Well, we're going to take as kind of a 40,000-foot view of the governor's budget with some detail from me, and then we'll let the budget expert, Meg Jete, at a later board meeting, once we have more detail, give us the Santa Barbara Unified perspective on the governor's proposal. We're still in the midst of gathering the detail we need in order to really give you a more coherent, this is how it directly impacts Santa Barbara Unified. So I thought I'd start by just giving you the 40,000-foot view, but there is some detail. For the first time in five years, we have education funding that goes up, so there's some reason or cause to be happy and in a celebratory mood, it's about time kids were taken care of. The weighted student formula of 2012, which you heard us talk about, has been replaced. It's now called the Local Control Funding Formula. And I have been told by the governor's interim or soon-to-be executive director, Secretary of Education, that the governor is very much committed to this idea, and so we're going to, most likely going to be able to see that concept moving forward, the idea that the local control over funding. The revenue limit deficit, and I put in this in particular for Ms. Jete, continues to be more than 20%, and you heard our auditor talk about the idea that for every dollar that we're supposed to get, we really only get 80 cents. It's actually a little bit less than that, yeah, 77 cents. But for the first time since '07-'08, it didn't grow, so that's also good news, so it's remained static. Funding still is about 10% less than it was in 2007, 2008, and a very important thing to recognize is, under the Local Control Funding Formula, and this is purposeful, not all districts will be treated equally at a revenue limit. There's some new data that was released based on the 2010-11 school year that I think's really important for us to remember, that puts all of what I'm about to say in context. California, and this is 2010-11, ranked 40th in expense per student, $1,800 below the national average. California has the fourth highest paid teachers, but California has the highest class sizes per teacher. It's over 50% higher than the average in the United States. California has the largest number of students per administrator, over twice the national average. California has the largest number of students per counselor, just about twice the national average, and California has the largest number of students per librarian, over five times the national average. So despite these gains, we remain significantly below not the highest states, but the national average in our nation. So while it's wonderful to be celebratory about the increase, I think it's really important that we remain cognizant of the increase in the context of the rest of the nation. So here's some hard facts in the governor's budget proposal. He proposes $1.8 billion to reduce the inter-year deferrals, which you heard our auditor, I didn't know he'd be talking about it, the amount of money we have to borrow, which is great. He also has allocated $1.6 billion to begin the implementation of the Local Control Funding Formula. It has a seven-year phase in, and the estimate is that if it was done in one year, it would cost in excess of $15 billion. So the $1.6 billion is significantly insignificant in relationship to the $15 billion. Put $400 million in to support energy efficiency projects, though I'll be very frank, the, at a superintendent's meeting on Friday, the belief is LAUSD will suck every dollar of that up, we won't see a penny of it. $100 million to increase the K-12 mandate block grant program, which is good. $62.8 million for a 1.65% cost of living adjustment for selected categorical programs. Obviously, the biggest item is the Local Control Funding Formula, because it replaces revenue limits, the way that we currently are funded, and most all categorical programs are eliminated. Some of the elements of it are, the base year is 2007, 2008, and for us in Santa Barbara, as I've said publicly a couple of times, presents a small quandary since we didn't exist in 2007, 2008, and I've discovered in talking to the CDE that we're one of, I believe it's 16 or 17 school districts that are in that same boat. So there's some confusion how the DOF will handle that, whether there'll have to be special legislation for us, or whether it will just be recognized that it's the date of our unification, so. Another unique part of it is that, depending on what grade you're in, we'll get different amounts of money. They have grade span formulas. So K-3 will receive a specific amount of money per student, that will be different than grades 4 through 6, that will be different than grades 7 through 8, that will be different than grades 9 through 12. Very unusual. Contained within the K-3 will be additional money for class size reduction. Also contained within 9-12 will be additional money for career technical education, which are programs that the governor feels pretty strongly about. So I said that we're going to eliminate categorical programs, and I know, when I hear that, I just go, oh, okay. So I thought it'd be good to actually list the programs that will no longer exist under the governor's proposed budget. These are ones that we participate in. The Administrator Training Program, the Advanced Placement Grant Program, the Art and Music Block Grant, California High School Exit Exam, Charter Schools Block Grant, Community-Based English Tutoring, Deferred Maintenance, Economic Impact Aid, Educational Technology, Gifted and Talented Education, Grades 7 through 12 Counseling, High School Class Size Reduction, Instructional Materials Block Grant, K-3 Class Size Reduction, Oral Health Assessments, Partnership Academies, PE Block Grant, Pupil Retention Block Grant, School and Library Improvement Block Grant, School Safety Block Grant, Specialized Secondary Program Grants. They're all gone under the governor's proposal. What is left are ACES, which was Prop 49, QIA, which was a lawsuit, Child Nutrition, Special Education, and what, TIG, what we used to call the DSEG money, Transportation and Targeted Instructional Improvement Grant, and Home-to-School Transportation. So it is a sweeping change to our current system. We've made some steps along the road because you all participated in the Tier 3 move to sweeping categorical programs, removing them into unrestricted general fund of particular, but those were all scheduled to sunset, all of that. This would change all of that and eliminate all those silos. There's two other important components to the base grant that we would get per student, depending upon the grade span, and they are supplemental grants, which we would receive, which would equal to 35% of the base grant, for every student, unduplicated, that was an English learner, eligible for free and reduced lunch, or a foster youth. And that would be equal to 35%, and so it would be 35% of the grade span. So if those students were K-3, it would be a certain amount. 4-6 would be a different amount. 7, 8, a different amount. Very unusual. I'm glad that Meg can operate a calculator well, probably it'd be Conrad that would be doing that. And then the other grant, which is the much more controversial part of the Local Control Funding Formula, are the concentration grants, which are also equal to 35% of the base grant, but they apply only to every student above 50% in the district in those three categories. So in order for any district to be eligible for a concentration grant, it must have one student more than 50% of its students that are English learner, eligible for free and reduced lunch, or foster youth. There's a lot of conversation about that, because our district, the way our district is, is not atypical, where we have some schools that are 80 to 100% free and reduced lunch, while others might be 15 to 20%. So this does not recognize that there is huge differences in individual school populations, because this is based entirely on the district's overall count, and so that money would go to the district. We're supposed to, the Department of Finance is supposed to tell, was supposed to tell us, it would be by next week, or this week? This week, yeah, was supposed to tell us how much money we're going to get each school district, but I'm not confident that we'll actually get that level of detail, though I will say that Meg and her staff are putting together, I think, a pretty strong sort of hypothetical on the best information we have now that we'll bring forward, that will help kind of guide our recommendations for your decision-making in the time to come. But there are some serious issues that will have to be dealt with in relationship to the elimination of all these categorical programs, and one of them was, I just jokingly said in response to Ms. Parker's comment about site councils, is whether or not we will continue to have or be required to have site councils. What they're, if we do, what will their role be in relationship to our federal grants as opposed to our state grants? So there's a whole host of program issues that we'll be bringing forward, well, once we have more information from this, from the governor's office and from the legislature. So that's your 40,000 view. I just want to tell you that we've come up with what we think are four questions that we plan to ask our legislators, and they are, what will our base year be, which we think's important to know? Are you, you know, are we going to be required for two, to plan for two budgets? Should we continue to plan for a revenue limit only, so none of this happens, and a local control, or should we do our best to kind of figure out our role, be as loose and flexible as we can while the legislature goes through its gyrations to tell us what form of the Local Control Funding Formula we'll have? Still have a big question on reclassification of English learner students, because that is a huge amount of money that school districts will be getting for English learner students. So I have questions about that. And then the concentration grant questions. There was a strong consensus at our superintendent meeting on Friday, that the idea of basing the concentration grants solely on district-level concentrations is really not a recognition of reality in California. So we'll see where that goes as well. So our plan remains to be conservative, build our reserves, create a balanced budget with no deficit spending. We think, no matter what, we still need to take advantage of the opportunity to look for efficiencies and better ways to do things for less money. We want to stay focused on student achievement, which you heard, I'm going to, because I heard it, and I was with Dr. Paz, from just about every single principal, how important professional development is now more than, maybe more than ever, because of the dramatic change we're making from the California standards to the Common Core, and with the needed integration of technology in the classroom, that we still need to really make sure we're providing resources, both human and material resources in professional development. So we want to stay focused on student achievement. We also want to work to eliminate the disparities within our own district in funding. We might have a better opportunity through this Local Control Funding Formula than we've had in the past, which will also be an interesting conversation. And we will continue to bring forward recommendations for personnel and programs that are based on our need to maintain a balanced budget, not just for next year, but for the years that come forward. So there's the 40,000-foot view. The more exciting presentation will be the one that Ms. Jete will make, which actually will be dollars and cents for Santa Barbara Unified, but I'd be happy to take any questions or direction that you'd like me to take from this point forward.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Ms. Parker?
Quick question first, on the concentration grants, do you know yet, is that district-level data?
District-level.
Or is it, is it K-3, 4-6? Because we have huge differences between K-6, for example, and 7-12.
It has to be 50, it's the district, it's 50%.
It has to be over 50%, but it will be allocated by the number of students in each one of those grade levels.
That are over 50%.
Once you hit 50%, that just seems ridiculous. Okay, and the other question I have is the, is the process for funding whatever our base allocation is, is that the same? In other words, if the state says you're going to get X amount of money, then that is first funded through property taxes, and any difference between your local property taxes and the amount they say is going to come back down from the state?
Yes.
That's correct.
That's correct.
So what about all of our feeder elementaries that are basic aid?
Well, we discussed that a little bit, I brought that up today in Cabinet, that, you know, all those categoricals going on to the unrestricted side of the budget could bump potentially some of these districts.
Could change two of our component districts to revenue limit.
Galita and Hope?
Yes.
Maybe even Carp.
And what about, but is there any discussion at the state level about basic aid?
Just that they will, just that they will not be required to pay their fair share like they have been.
Dr. Paz?
The only comment I was going to make is that it would make more sense if the concentration grants were, in Wishville thinking, that were based on the individual schools and then came back to the, rolled back to the district to use across the district, right? But they're doing it, I would say, backwards and saying it's a district, and then you have local control, but you really can't do anything about your local populations, which does not make sense to me at all. So the only thing I was going to say is that I would really like to continue to hear updates about that specific thing as you're talking to other superintendents, and hopefully that will be changed, because it does not make sense to me at all.
Yeah, well, the interesting thing is, we could have 49.999%, and somebody could have, you know, 51%, and they're still, they're going to get the concentration grant, and we won't.
Mr. Hearn?
Just interesting, in the Monastir Journal this past week, it currently, I think there's a detailed article about property taxes at the schools and how money is spent, it just makes good, good reading, but more importantly, what is the chances of this going through the legislative process? I mean, does, is there talk about whether it's going to be attacked, or is Governor Brown going to get his way and get it done?
Well, that's what all of us asked Friday, because we had a policymaker and his voice for education in the state in the room with us, and while she committed to nothing, smartly, she was very adamant in her statement that Governor Brown's vision is local control. As the mayor of Oakland, he had to run charter, he created charter schools and had to manage those charter schools, so he knows how important having more discretion and control is as opposed to having it come from Sacramento. So he feels very, he feels very strongly about that in relationship to assessment data as well, that he's not a big fan of broad-brush assessment data across the district like we currently have with the STAR. What he wants is data that teachers can use in classrooms immediately in relationship to changing their instructional practice, as opposed to it being kind of an afterthought. So she said over and over in response to all those very specific questions, his vision and value is around local control. So, you know, he has, there's a super majority of Democrats. So, you know, he has, there's a super majority of Democrats, so it will be interesting to see. Stay tuned.
I have a question. What does this mean for charter schools?
They're treated the same.
So for our three charter schools, do they see this as a move in the right direction or do, are they sharing some of the same concerns?
Can I answer that?
Yeah, sure.
I met with the accountant for Adelante and for Peabody and Damien from Peabody, and it looks pretty good for them because their funding increases immensely. We're talking around for the grade spans up in the upper sixes, mid to upper sixes, and right now they're getting mid-fives. So they're, they're excited about it.
And the other thing is, I actually read today that the money for English learners was only five years.
Yes, that's correct.
And so this, yeah, okay, so that was the way that they were going to incentivize reclassification by limiting it to five years and so.
That's correct. They, no matter where they come from, if they're two years in Galida, we track them for the rest, the three years later. After five years, they are no longer an English language learner. However, if they are qualified for free and reduce, they then drop down in that bucket because they're no longer counted in EL.
Yeah, so it's unduplicated pupil count, meaning if you have a student who's a foster youth, English learner, free and reduced lunch, the student counts as one, not as three.
All right. Ms. Edelson?
Is still the, free and reduced lunch is still a voluntary form?
Yes.
Yeah, there's no, same format as it's been?
Well, we're working on that to try to, we're trying to come up with some practices to capture what we think is a more accurate count of students that would qualify for free and reduced. We, we believe it's underreported for a whole host of reasons.
And it's eligible. It's based on eligible students.
Any other questions or comments? All right, well, we look forward to more detailed information. Thank you, Dr. Cash and Ms. Chite. Oh, and I'm sorry, we do have public comment, I'm sorry about that.
Mr. Wheeler, I buried your speaker card. Lane Wheeler.
Sometimes that's a good thing. Lane Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teachers Association. We've had an opportunity to discuss this matter with Dr. Cash, and I think we're of very similar minds in that we have an obligation to our students and our, the public we serve to articulate our concerns to our local legislators, which we helped elect, and to make them understand very clearly that whatever the governor's budget is and what the legislature acts on must reflect the realism of where we are. And we cannot come out of this budget process behind where we are currently. So I would call on you to make those, those contacts. SBTA will certainly be working with our local legislators to let them know that. An element of Dr. Cash's presentation that he did not mention was the fact that the employees of this district have not seen any kind of increase in salary and their benefit costs have gone up as addition, in addition to the cost of looming in California and Santa Barbara specifically. So that's also an aspect of, of our budget that we'd like to see. While it's essential that we have strong reserves, it's also essential to reward the people we have working for us on a day-to-day basis that have essentially taken a, a hit in their salary over the last six years with the costs of everything going up, up, up. So we call on you to do that. But we will stand shoulder to shoulder with our intention of making our local legislators be responsible to the electorate. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so now we are moving forward to discuss the proposed strategies to identify gifted and talented education, GATE students, which we just heard about might be on the chopping block.
That's right. So just to give you a little bit of a backdrop here, we wanted to do, as a district, wanted to take a look at some of our identification processes and the tool that we use to identify GATE students. At this point, I would like to call Harriet Whaley up to the, to the podium, as she is our elementary GATE testing coordinator, and she's going to be able to give us more information about this particular discussion item. What I want to bring your attention to, Conrad, would you mind go to the second page, please, is that there are, there are already different regulations guiding the GATE program that's listed in Title V that go straight to the heart of what we're going to discuss tonight. Everything from ensuring that we have methods designed to seek out and identify gifted and talented students from varying linguistic, economic, and cultural backgrounds. And each one of those, those regs, all four of them, and there were more, I just wanted to list four of them, is kind of what we're going to be talking about tonight. With all of the, the focus and the information that we saw in these regulations, we took a look at some of the, the demographics and how GATE is being implemented and particularly our underrepresented groups, and we noticed a concern. Two percent of our English learners are GATE identified, five percent of our socio-economically disadvantaged students are identified, and five percent of our Hispanic students are With that, I'm going to allow Harriet Whaley to take over the presentation from here.
Okay, thank you. Next slide, please. So this is some historical GATE identification information, thank you, about our Latinos students and quantities that we've tested over the last four years. You can see that in two thousand nine, we tested a hundred fifty-two Latinos students. What you're seeing here is efforts going forward, trying to test more Latinos students, and then you're seeing a big change of strategy happening between two thousand eleven and twelve where we climb almost a hundred students. And what happened was, before that time, we would identify English learners based on CST scores, and then we would send letters home to the parents and ask them to test those kids. And we would follow up with them directly from the district office. The change of strategy is that we sent those same students, the list, to the principals, and we asked the schools to be responsible for referring the, the students that we had requested. And that, as you can see, was more successful. What wasn't successful was our process in identifying students. So you can see that, for example, last year, even though we tested almost a hundred more Latino students last year, we only qualified three more for GATE. That's a big problem. Next slide, please. So if you look at the demographics last year of students tested and qualified, I've actually put them in three different categories. There's a category for non-Latino, and that could be English-only as well as English learners. Three hundred and three students were tested, seventy-three students qualified for GATE, and that is twenty-four percent. And then the most underrepresented group, Latino students, and that could be English-only students or learners. Two hundred seventy-nine tested, twenty-eight were qualified, and that's ten percent. And then EL students, which are, they would be included in, in the Latino as well, Latino and non-Latino, two hundred forty-nine tested, thirty-five qualified, fourteen percent total. So I've been doing quite a bit of research. Next slide, please. Unfortunately, this was built in layers, and so you're not seeing the, the first graph. But, so I was looking at two major studies that were conducted in order to improve identification rates of English learners. The first chart that you can't see is the Noglieri Nonverbal Test. The next chart is for the COGAT test, which is the one we use in our district. And the next one is the Ravens test. And what the studies showed were that the test that we're already using was the test that yielded an expected bell curve result. So if you look at the dashed line, that is the English learners, the results, their scores. And if you look at the solid blue line, those are the non-EL students. So you can see they have, with the middle graph, I'm sorry that you can't see the bottom one, but that, the first one on the left, but those are the, they have a traditional bell curve, which you would expect to see in a type of cognitive abilities test, which makes us conclude that the test that we're already using is the best test for identifying English learners for GATE. Next slide. These are some of the sources that I used in my research, and I'd like to call your attention to the fourth bullet. There was a study of two thousand English learner students in Texas, it was in Waco, Texas, and it concluded, it, it used all three of the different tests over a period of time in different orders. And it concluded that the test that we use for the verbal section, that the English learners scored on average sixteen point six points below the English speakers, and the non-verbal was actually half of that, so they were scoring eight point three points lower. And then the quantitative or math battery, it was a thirteen point two points drop in, between English learners and non-EL students. Next slide, please. So what I did with that information was I took our English learner results from last year, and I adjusted the scores based on what the differences were noted in the Texas study. So that was sixteen point six points in verbal, thirteen point two points in quantitative, and eight point three points in non-verbal. So if you look at the table in the middle of the slide, you can see that if I had adjusted based on the results of the study that was done in Texas, we would have qualified sixty-four English learners for GATE last year. And interestingly, now I'm back at the first bullet, if English learners, students had qualified in the same percentiles as non-Latino students last year, then we would have had sixty-four EL students that would have qualified. That would have been an additional twenty-nine, which leaves us to believe, believe that the, the demographic is similar to our demographic and that the study that we looked at was a valid study to consider using in our school district. And then I'd like to pass it back to Mr. Handel.
Thank you. The recommendations that we, we want to make, and this is just a discussion item, is that we, we alter our current method that we're using to identify GATE, EL GATE students and utilize the Texas study and criteria, and also recommend that we retro-qualify the twenty-nine students that would have qualified from last year using this criteria. We also want to continue this discussion and reexamine how we're currently utilizing the tool that we have, the COGAT, to identify all subgroups for GATE. And finally, we also want to move next year, not this year, but develop a plan so that we can screen all second graders in our district, because right now that's not the case. We're, students get recognized or identified using some criteria, or a parent can push to have a student assessed, and we're not seeing that occur with some of our historically disadvantaged subgroups. At this point, I'd like to open it up to discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Handel. Board, any questions or comments? Ms. Parker?
I feel like I keep going first this time. Thank you, great presentation. And Ms. Whaley, I think with a little work after about another year's worth of data coming in, you could have a doctoral thesis there. I, it's really enlightening. I think it's so important to remember that, that these are gifted students, that the, just the fact that they're English learners and doing this well in the test is absolutely, you know, astounding, that they are definitely, you know, great candidates for the GATE program. One question I have is, with more EL students in the GATE program, what district support will that be, both for not just the students themselves but also for their families? And integrating, you know, we have, especially at the Washington program, we have a very segregated program. If we are able to get more English learner students into that, how do you integrate it both at the school, student level but also at the parent level? And then another piece of it for me is, on, on one and two, we have not, that has not been something that's come to the board in the past. Those have been administrative decisions, and I'm wondering if those can be administrative decisions in the future or if those, that's something that you plan to bring to the board. For three and four, we have had discussions in the past, I don't recall it being a board decision about which tool that we used. It certainly has been a sort of a board conference item. Number four, there's a financial component to that, and, and I'm also curious, and that is the sort of thing that I could see coming back to the board, do we screen all second graders? But I'm curious because I know that at least Carpinteria Unified tests all of its second graders. Do they see a, is there a dramatic difference, I don't know if you've looked at that, between the results for Carpinteria Unified compared to, you know, Santa Barbara where it's, it's, you know, tested by recommendation? Do they, do they have, are they able to identify more students proportionally? And are there more minority students and English learners in that group?
So, just so happens, we have Teresa Kuntz with us tonight, who also is our, our GATE program coordinator but also works out in Carpinteria. Teresa, would, would you mind answering a couple of those questions, specifically in regards to testing all the students and the results as they apply to our, our English learners?
Okay. Well, basically the difference between the testing that we conduct in Carpinteria versus the testing that we conduct here is that we do blanket test all second graders. We use the Ravens progressive matrices, which is a less comprehensive exam. There are fewer components to it. It's a shorter exam, takes approximately forty-five minutes to administer, and it can be done with an entire classroom of teacher, of students. So you could have twenty kids taking the test. Whereas the exam that we've been using here, there are three different components. I think we look at a total of four hours, is that correct, Harriet, to administer it? So the Ravens is a very good tool if you're going to blanket test. And it is also used in the Santa Maria Bonita district, they use that as well. To complement the Ravens, Carpinteria Unified also uses the CST scores. So they look for students to score advanced in the, the math and the reading portions of the CSTs. There are special exceptions made for our EL kids, especially looking at the reading, the language arts score. Usually that can be a little bit lower, and we take in, you know, we do more of a portfolio assessment to identify those children. So as far as cost, the Ravens is not a very expensive test to administer versus the COGAT being quite expensive because it has to be done on such an individualized basis. The test itself is expensive at the second grade level because we purchase booklets for, for each of those second graders, and they're consumable. The second, or the third through sixth grade tests can be done on score sheets. Also, the, the scoring is much more expensive because we have to send the scoring into the company. So that's kind of the financial difference. As far as the identification rates, the one nice thing about the Ravens is that it's a non-verbal, so students do not have to speak the language to take the test. They, so we do see a good rate of students who will score very high on that test. Then we go to the teachers and we'll ask, you know, if they will suggest that student for the GATE program if they feel that that student is, is a good candidate. It's interesting because sometimes students that are really struggling will actually do very well on that test. And then, once we put together the portfolio, we need to decide whether or not that student would be able to work at the, the level in, in the GATE program. So that said, that our EL students do tend to score very well. We tend to have a good, a pretty representative rate. I won't say that it's, it's perfect. I, I've talked a lot to the coordinators in Ventura, coordinators in Oxnard, coordinators in Santa Maria Bonita, and we all struggle on identifying our second language learners. And we all compare notes and try to look for other tools to supplement that initial score. But as far as blanket testing, I do think that the Ravens is a good place to start.
But the rates in Carpinteria currently are higher.
But the rates in Carpinteria currently are higher. Are they identifying percentage-wise, a higher number of ELs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Edelson?
I had a question, are parent requests still being taken when a parent feels that a student may qualify for GATE? And if so, has that system gotten any easier for parents? Because on occasion, I've been a parent requesting, and it's a very elaborate, detailed questionnaire about your student or your child. And then also, I wondered if there's any data on, of those kids who have qualified, how many have been teacher recommendations or referrals to take the GATE test versus, say, a parent or somebody else from the school?
Harriet, do you want to address that one?
Your first question, which was, is it easier process for parents now? It's a similar process now for parents. It is a pretty detailed questionnaire. It's a much streamlined process now for teachers to make referrals than it is for parents.
And for the parent request form, is it bilingual? Is it in Spanish also?
It is. It has been simplified, but I, I don't know how long it's been since you filled it out, but it's, it is more complicated than the teacher referral, which is just a one-sheeter. Used to be a four-sheeter, and now it's a one.
And of those children who've been tested, based on a parent referral, has there been many identified, or is that generally, you see the teacher referrals cover that?
It varies from school to school. Some schools have mostly eliminated teacher referrals and have just asked for all second grade referrals to come directly from the parents. So any of those students who would qualify are all going to be generated as parent referrals. Some students, some schools' parents hardly make any referrals at all, and they're all teacher referrals. So as far as summary information on that, I'd have to get back with you on a roll-up of what the district referred, what the parents referred, what the teachers referred, and then the qualification percentages on that.
Because wouldn't somebody who, or a situation where it is parent referral, unless you have, you know, a great communication system going and educating those parents on what the GATE program is, would be lacking of those?
The process is, when it's GATE referral season, which is the beginning of November, we send out a packet that has the qualification, qualification criterion, as well as the referral forms and characteristics of a gifted learner versus a bright child. We have that, and it's bilingual. We also have a new document called the Characteristics of a Gifted English Learner. And that's for teachers and parents as well. So we're trying to get that information out. We request that all schools distribute it in their weekly folder to all parents of non-GATE identified kids in, in grades two through five. So the hope is that the schools are doing that and that the parents are, are reading that and making some decisions based on that. We also schedule the deadline for submitting those forms immediately after parent-teacher conference week. And the objective that we state to both the teachers and the parents is that we'd like for them to discuss whether the child should be identified for GATE testing at that conference. I think that...
District referral.
And, yeah, and then the district, as I'd said before, makes referrals for English learners.
Dr. Pass?
Yeah. Just coming back to that last point you made, which is, you know, having that discussion at the teacher-parent conference, I think it's great that we're doing that. Just wonder if there was, has ever been a consideration of maybe having, after the packets go out, having some sort of workshop, talking to parents a little more broadly, where parents could ask more questions? Sometimes maybe the focus on, you know, parent-teacher conferences, not necessarily looking at whether the child is gifted, maybe some other, there are usually other issues going on. So I'm, I'm just wondering about that.
We do, in our documents that we send out, we have a GATE information night.
Great.
During testing referral time. So Teresa speaks and I speak, and we talk about different programs and the testing process. And we have translation provided as well, and, sorry, interpretation. And then next year, we'll also have the slides in Spanish as well. So, and the, and the turnout varies for that. When we had it at McKinley, when you were principal, I think there were 100 parents turned out for that. So, yeah, there was a lot of interest.
Mr. Herron?
Did Peabody, or does Peabody test all second graders?
Peabody, my understa, first of all, let me say, Peabody does all of their own administration and testing. So, I'm not completely familiar with what their process is. But the last that I spoke with them about it and understood it, they had stopped doing blanket testing of all of their third graders due to cost concerns. But I do not know where they are on that now.
Okay, thank you.
So, as far as the recommendations, like Ms. Parker, I had just a question about whether we have the capacity or not to screen all second graders and what that would mean. So I'd like to hear more about that in the future. And then as far as the COGAT, right, am I pronouncing it? COGAT?
COGAT.
COGAT. Is this an adaptive test? Is this a test where there's copies out in the world somewhere that someone could get a hold of? Is it an annual, I mean, yeah?
You, well, no. You have to be a school district in order to buy the test, or a psych, a licensed psychologist in order to buy the test. You can't go on the internet and search for the COGAT and get a test. You can get sample-type problems, but they're not the actual problems that are on the test.
So, I mean, the, so if there's sample questions out there, someone can essentially get a hold of a mechanism to practice for this exam?
Well, the, the website of the publisher of the test actually has samples.
So, what I'm thinking about this is, you know, two different tests were presented to us, and the COGAT is one of them, the Ravens is the other. And what we know is that, as far as performance on these tests, and I do think it's performance, and that there's multiple things that can impact them. The environment is one of them. And so I also think about, really this discussion focused on the exam, but what about the environment where the students are taking the test? The other is preparation. And as far as I know, there are members of our community preparing to take for this test. So they're practicing, in some cases, they're paying to get help. And so that in and of itself creates inequity. And I wonder, well, how much gaitness does it really test if someone has the means to prepare for this test? And so, I appreciate the comments that have been made as far as thinking about this holistically. And I mean, this is exactly the, the reason why GREs and ASATs don't carry full weight, because there are tools that help them prepare, and they look at letters of recommendation, they look at writing samples, which I think are important as well. So, I didn't hear much mentioned about these other factors. I mean, really, is there, are there things that we can do to change the environment, the testing environment? Because that has an impact on tests. Are also, I mean, what do we do about the piece that those students who have means have additional support to prepare for this test?
Well, that's an excellent question and observation, because I think it goes to a key question as to whether or not the GATE program is for gifted and talented students or something else. So, the purpose of this evening's presentation was to give you kind of a status quo presentation of where we're at and the things we're thinking about, and some initial recommendations. But we certainly believe we'll be coming forward with some more substantive things, or at least informing you of some administrative changes we'd be making, and so...
Well, and I think it's, I think it's important, I mean, if, that we want students who are ready to take on the additional challenge and, and work. So I think there's no doubt about that. But I also think it's important to really think about this holistically. And, and I feel it's not just the, the tests that we use. There's more factors in there that need to be considered when it comes to equity and really identifying the gifted students. And Ms. Parker has comments?
Just to follow up with what Ms. Dimone said, I mean, I know it has been an issue in past years where parents have trained, or have paid to have their students essentially trained on how to take this test. And I don't know, maybe you can enlighten us if this is less of an issue now than it has been in past years. But it does speak to the fact that while the COGAT may be the best test, when you look at it in, in studies elsewhere, it may not be the best test anymore for us locally if it is being used through some sort of tutoring process to, to, you know, for, for parents and students that have the means.
Well, I think that any tutoring process has the, all of the different tests that are out there. So I don't know that one test gets tutored more or less than the other. There is a new COGAT test, and we've talked about the expense that it would be, and not only costs, but operational changes that it would require to take, to use, utilize that test as well. The protocol for the test currently requires a signature from parents saying that they haven't prepped their student to take the test. And I can tell you from the numbers of students qualifying in places where we've seen that problem in the past, it definitely was an issue several years ago, and I have not noticed that it's an issue in any numbers lately, in the last few years. And I haven't heard anything. I mean, proctors have heard in the past, when they're giving the test, they've heard students say, "Oh, I know this problem, I remember this one." And I haven't heard anything for several years, like, anything like that, that indicates people are, are prepping in any large numbers.
But we don't know it with certainty.
No way, we would, would we know it? You're, you're correct, we don't know it.
Okay. Mr. Herron?
Is it possible to get a link to that Texas study?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, board, any other questions, comments, direction? All right, well, thank you for your time and the information.
Thank you both for coming, appreciate it very much.
All right, Dr. Cash?
All right, well, this is the second in the series of Common Core updates, and I know it's going to be very, very quick and informative.
Yes, are we ready? So we wanted to give you a quick, a quick overview of mathematically, what the new Common Core holds in store for our students. We start off with a, we'll go, let's go to the next slide, about the design and organization. You'll notice, if you ever get a, if you take a chance, take an opportunity to take a look at how the, the standards are now designed and organized, there are standards for mathematical practice, and there's also standards for mathematical content. And it varies in a, by cluster of grades. It's K through two, three through five, and then six through eight, I believe, and nine, nine through 12 after that. Go to the next slide, please. In the design and organization, you'll notice, when you look at the document, there's a domain, that's the top part, and this is third grade. You see number and operations in base 10. Then you see the standard right underneath it, the specific standard. And then you see the clustered, basically the sub-standards or the skills involved for that particular standard. Next slide. Then you have overviews of the design and organization. So you'll see an overview of the big ideas, the skills involved in the particular grade level, in this case kindergarten. And then you'll see the mathematical practices associated to that particular grade level on the right-hand side. Next. We want to show you an example of a Common Core standard versus a current California standard that's currently used in sixth grade. Common Core version is on the left-hand side, and the California State standard is on the right-hand side. And while there's a, a lot more writing on the right-hand side, there are some, some differences that are, it's a huge shift from what we have had in the past. If you can go to the next slide, please. The differences you'll notice is the higher level of Bloom's, Bloom's taxonomy, an integrated approach, and it requires more collaboration amongst teachers. And the importance in knowing these differences is that our teachers, especially at the elementary level, where, you know, historically, we've been math-phobes, because that's typically not why our elementary teachers are well-versed in mathematics and the concepts and what have you. Is, our, our teachers, especially at the, the elementary level, need to become more proficient in math concepts, and that's, you know, has to do a lot with professional development and focus going forward. Teachers have to devote more time to teach math during the day. It varies from site to site, and you'll notice, some schools you'll see spend half an hour, 45 minutes, and others you'll see, you know, anywhere from hour and a half to two hours. You also, it's important, because there's, there has to be more vertical articulation from our elementary through secondary, because of what Dr. Droudi's going to talk about real soon. We're, we really, really need a well-articulated plan from kindergarten up through the secondary, and finally, more focus on math literacy. Our, our students and our staff have be, have to become much more literate in, in math. We have to have, develop a much better fluency in math. Dr. Droudi?
Okay. At the secondary level, the high school standards are organized into conceptual, conceptual themes. And that has some major implications that we're going to have to talk about, dive deeper into it, but, but they are organized into conceptual themes such as algebra functions, modeling, geometry, statistics, and probability. So, but before I go into the details of that, I think it's important that we talk about how, at least at the secondary, how we're organized with our stat development plan in terms of PLCs. Currently, what I've charged every school was, is to organize themselves into well-defined PLCs. English nine PLC, English 10 PLC, algebra PLC. So each site has, teams of teachers are working PLCs. Just a reminder that PLC just means that it's, it's a philosophical way in which teachers ask or identify what they teach, what they teach. Also, they identify a tool to measure whether, what they're taught, whether students learned it. And then lastly, how they respond, whether students learned it or not, learned it, how they respond as a team. So, with that, we have identified PLC leaders on each site. So, the PLC leaders meet with me on a regular basis, and we call that team the transition team. Okay? This is an example of the organization at the secondary, and I'm going to point to, since we're talking about math, I'm going to talk about this transition. These are basically the PLC leaders of every secondary school in the district, seventh grade math, eighth grade math, and these are the leaders that I work with on a regular basis. And they will be our experts. They will be our experts in anything that we do in regards to math. They'll be, they'll be the ones to travel to any trainings. So they are going to be our coaches as we develop lessons, everything like that. So, the idea is, we work as a, as a district with this group. This group then goes to the secondaries and works with them, and binds all of us together in the work, in a cohesive and collaborative manner. With that said, I'm going to talk about the differences you'll notice at, at the secondary level. With the California State standards, high school algebra was what was asked of schools to deliver with all, all students. After Algebra I, it was optional, whether you're going to take geometry or Algebra II or whatnot. So, everybody is required to take algebra with the CSTs, but after that, it becomes optional. So, districts within have to create their own graduation requirements, some go to Algebra II, some go to geometry and so forth. With, with the Common Core, every student is required to know, I'm going to, I'm going to use the term concepts, of algebra, Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II. Major change, we'll talk about the implications of that in a second. Secondly, with the CSTs, there was no, there was no specific eighth grade test. So, in eighth grade, it can take geometry, algebra, sometimes some kind of general math, or if they're in, say they're in Algebra II, they will take the Algebra II test in eighth grade. With, with the Common Core, there is an eighth grade test that all students have to take across the nation. the nation. So that, that has some significant impact on what we have to do. And lastly, high school standards that, with the CSTs, were organized into courses, Algebra, you take Algebra, Geometry, you take Geometry standards, Algebra II standards. With the Common Core, what we normally use to call algebra is no longer what we recognize as algebra. It's going to be a sequence of, of standards that are algebraic themes, that, so, so that's, that has some direct implication in what we do. I'm trying to go as fast as I can, Dr. Cash.
You're doing both a good job of being informative and going quickly.
Okay, okay, good. Furthermore, with the CSTs, there were a lot of focus on procedures and things like that, where, you know, somebody taking a Common Core course like my kids did would be very proficient, because it's procedural. With the Common Core, there's a lot of, there's a lot of work in going deeper and really having students conceptually understand what they're doing with math. These are, these are what we call, excuse me, standard math practices that are going to be interwoven through all the math curriculum. So, so the idea is, the example will be making sure that problems and procedures are, certain procedures are done, reasoning abstractly will be, will be taught through math. Something called precision will be taught through there, and also, the term, my favorite term in this whole thing is, is, hold on a second. Perseverance, that's the term I'm looking for. Perseverance. Very, with the old Common Core, if students ran into some kind of long division, they'd probably try the one or two steps, "I'm done, teacher, you tell me, and I'm not going to do it." With the Common Core, the focus is on making sure that they actually go through and finish the work, but they are strategies that we have to teach to make sure that students persevere. So, these SMPs are pretty, pretty critical to what we're going to do. With the CSTs, they were, the course, there was an itemized list of objectives taught within the grade. Seventh grade math, there are certain standards are taught, and algebra, there are certain standards are taught. This one here is more of a progressive, integrated path, mixing physics with algebra, with geometry. All those concepts, slope of a line, when you're talking about a, when you're talking about a slope of a line, okay, there's a lot of things about slope of a line that's integrated with other subject areas that have to be brought into, into the curriculum. It'll be a very in-depth approach. With the CST, there wasn't a lot of focus on statistics. Here, there's a lot. Interestingly, what I met with the math transition team several times, this is what they're concerned about, because they themselves realize that they have to go back to school to really understand what this is. So, I want to make sure I call your attention to this here. There are, with the smarter balance, there's an assessment in seventh and eighth grade, as I mentioned, and then there are no assessments in ninth and 10th, and then there's a final test on 11th grade. These, the subjects here will be measured, Algebra I, Concepts, Geometry, Algebra II will be measured at 11th grade year. This, this gives us some interesting options of pathways that we'll dive into, because we're not dictated by ninth grade to know something, 10th grade to know something. We have to get to 11th grade knowing these concepts. Again, we were never asked to require, we were never required to really understand Algebra II concepts, now we are. Eighth grade, as I mentioned, there is assessment there, and that's different. Implications. Okay, because we have to go to Algebra II, okay, there are a lot of implications about what course are we going to offer, what, we're going to name our courses. I know some of you are sitting on the graduate requirement committee, that's going to be a major discussion we have to have. I didn't, there's one point I didn't, I wanted, to kind of, not to scare you, but this year's sixth graders will be assessed at the end of their eighth grade year this year, meaning we have to make decisions this spring. We have to make decisions this spring that'll impact their eighth graders, because they have to go into seventh grade understanding what they're going to be taught. So, that's the discussion we're having, the transition team, about when we fully engage with math, and the consensus is that we have to start next year. We have to start next year. So, that's, we're not dealing with all those discussions yet. At the end of the day, you guys have to be the ones who guide us on that. So a lot of implications. What we are going to, with the secondary, so there's a lot of implications for math pathways that we have to consider. We have to develop and adopt our own pathways, because there's flexibility in how we get to the end, because we're not forced to test in ninth, 10th, 11th, we have flexibility how we get to the end. We just have to get to the end, 11th grade, to make sure all students understand Algebra II concepts. So, we have to develop as a district our own pathways, and then naming it, remember what I said was, algebra isn't synonymous to the algebra we know. Are we going to continue to call it algebra, and if it's algebra, how do we separate it from the algebra that we know? Because the easiest thing for a teacher to do is say, well, if we call it algebra in ninth grade, the easiest thing for a teacher to say is, "I'll just stick to my old algebra concepts," and we, that's not what we want, because it's a different, it's a different thing. So those are discussions that we're having with the transition team. I want to talk, before I go on, there's a definition that I'm going to be talking about, it's called compaction. Compaction is when you take a series of standards, so the intent is, there's a series of standards that we're supposed to learn in seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, taking two years of standards into one year, or three years into two years. That's a term that we're going to call compaction, because, and because that is a pathway that we have to consider for our accelerated students. And there are some things that we have to make sure we note, if we're going to, if we are going to compact, that we, nothing has to be omitted. Okay? It's very easy to take three years of math into two and start pulling things out, what we say, we can't admit anything because we're required, our students are required to, are going to be charged to be successful with their assessments. We shouldn't rush, we shouldn't really rush it. And these are all from experts from the, from CDE and math experts out there that recommended these. And then we need to have, make sure we have a solid way of really measuring students' ability in math. Okay? And that's something that we have to develop as a district, and who, and so we, when we're identifying students that are honor students or gate students, that, you know, really, that's who we're talking about here. And then, but state, the nation wants all students to really focus on math their all four, all four years of high school. That's what, they'll be encouraged to do that. Okay, now, just to kind of show you the dilemma we're going to deal with, this is basically the math pathways that we are currently, we currently live by. We have, it's a regular track, sixth, sixth grade math, seventh grade math, most students take algebra during eighth grade, geometry and so forth. And those that continue, we're taking calculus. Those that are accelerated right now really combine a lot of what, they, they combine sixth and seventh grade concepts. But what they do currently, according to my math teachers, is that they, there's a lot of pulling out of concepts that they use right now, but these are basically our gate students that are preparing to take the algebra readiness test to be able to take algebra in seventh grade. So that's, that's a trajectory of students that take, that are honor students here. And then we also have students that are, that need extra support in math, and this is basically the pathway they normally take. Now, now, I'm going to show you the Common Core discussions that we have to have. This is what a general student would take, college prep student would take, sixth grade math, seventh grade math, eighth grade math, that's being tested specifically on eighth grade standards. And then you go on to, I call it M1, certain districts want to go integrated, others want to keep the traditional name of Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, with statistics embedded. As we call it this, just realize that it's not the algebra that you're accustomed to. Okay? We have to kind of be on the same page as we talk through this, so. And as it goes forward, and then the fourth year, this student would then, this student would then take Algebra II, or with statistics, and then go on to be encouraged to take another course. So if you want to compact for accelerated students, the recommended compaction is not two years to one. The experts think that's way too much information for a student to handle. The idea is to compact two years, three years into two. Okay? So, so if we compact it to junior high, which are, we will have to compact seventh grade, eighth grade, and in ninth grade into two years here. In Algebra I into two years. Seventh grade, eighth grade, Algebra I into two years. And then this, this group then goes on to Geometry and so forth, and they'll get to calculus by 12th grade. So accelerated student, we need to talk. Another compaction option, if we compact it to high school, we can compact here later, later on, for those late bloomers, that obviously, oh, I'm going to seventh grade, eighth grade, and, oh, I think I'm a genius now. So, they go into ninth, 10th, and they compact here, and they can still get to calculus by 12th grade. Compaction occurs in high school. Another compaction, a double compaction is if those students that want to get to calculus also by, there's another double compaction you can take here. Okay? Or here, if you want to compact later on, even farther later on down the line with, you can take Algebra II, Statistics, and a fourth course to compact to get to calculus. So there's different pathways to get to calculus, as you can see. And then lastly, this is for really the students that are the highest, the most accelerated here, and the compaction occurs all through here, and they'll get to 11th grade and take calculus at 11th grade, and still be encouraged to take the, probably the next, the second semester, integration, second, second semester calculus, either through UCA, the City College, or if we offer it here. So, as I mentioned, we have to make these decisions now, because the sixth graders, our parents are coming out from, are wondering what the pathway is. So, just wanted to, and lastly, so far, we haven't talked, these are going to be math concepts that we will teach at a much higher level of Bloom's taxonomy, so there has to be a lot of, there has, there's, there has to be a lot of effort towards students that need support, that are coming to seventh, eighth grade that may not know still how to do long division. All those things have to be considered. So, part of the pathways that we have to consider are extending time for math students. How do we extend time? There's all kinds of different ways to do that, we have to talk through that. Options would be taking two, two math courses, is that a good thing, not a good thing? Where, so there's a lot of discussion that has to take place with the students that need to support, and this is just a comment that we use to inspire teachers. So, I'll leave it up to you guys for questions.
As you can see, the secondary is much more complicated than the elementary.
Dr. Droudi? Dr. Cash, would you like to say anything?
Well, I would. I think one of the best things that you'll note is that we continue to retain multiple options for kids and try to be as flexible as possible. A lot of the advice across the nation is not to be flexible, is to really march kids down a very particular pathway, which is toward this integrated math approach, which we will have as one of the options. But we think it's also really important to continue to provide acceleration or compaction options for kids who are really gifted in math, or who really want to work hard in math.
Board, questions or comments? Ms. Parker, or Ms. Idelson?
Okay. How is this all translating towards the college requirements? I mean, is that going to totally be recognized or revamped, how the A to G and all this stuff?
Absolutely. The creation of the Common Core State Standards were a collaboration between universities, the colleges, but, so, so all those discussions are taking place. I think more discussions need to take place to make sure the colleges truly do understand what we're, what we're doing. The idea is, across the nation, 11th grade test, it'll give a strong, it'll give a strong indicator of a student's ability to be able to do math, possibly more than the SATs and ACTs.
It, it could replace the EAP, which will no longer exist, as far as providing colleges information on where students should be during their, whether they're college-ready, and what courses they might need to take during their first year of college.
Ms. Parker?
Well, first of all, following up with Ms. Idelson's question, because one of my questions is, it's great that you have so much local flexibility, but even just in terms of, say, naming it, if, you know, if a particular district is, is very concerned about math blocks and, and trying to present math in a positive light, they may call their sequence, you know, Joy of Math I, Joy of Math II, and another one's going to call it Integrated Math I, Integrated Math II. How are the universities going to recognize this as the same content? And, and so I don't know if we're having discussions, if there's some, if there's some body that says, "This is the way universities want you to, to name things," for example. And then the other question I have is that right now, I mean, and I understand that the content is changing, but right now, most district students in eighth grade have finished their algebra content by the end of eighth grade. And I understand that what is in Math VII and Math VIII and A1 or M1 with stats will be somewhat different, but I would actually think that what's listed here as compact, it would probably be the most typical pathway for our current students, if they're, if they're currently, most of them are successful in Algebra I by the end of eighth grade, that they're probably going to be successful, the compacted pathway. So I really want to say how important I think it is to look at these other compaction processes and pathways, and that we do, when it comes forward to the board, that those are included, because I think that there is, there's going to be, it's, it's a minority of students, certainly, a small number of students that are ready for the, the higher compaction, but it needs to be an option for them.
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Will every one of our schools have classes named the same?
Yes. You will get a master course list, both names recommended by the math, Dr. Droudi's transition team, they'll be coming forward very soon for you to adopt.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Handel and Dr. Droudi. And our last agenda, conference agenda item is strategic plan update. Dr. Cash?
Well, I just wanted to quickly let you know that we've organized ourselves around the performance goals that have been identified for the 2013 calendar year, and have developed a tentative timeline around that, which would have us bringing, bringing forward very specific things throughout the calendar year, beginning in the March, April, where we would bring forward our three-year professional learning plan that would be submitted for discussion and approval. In April, we would bring forward a new streamlined process to create more community use of schools, and the new human resources practices for recruitment, hiring, and retention. In May, we'd bring forward our PLC process that we develop, we'll be obviously negotiating that with our teachers' association as well. In June, we'd be bringing forward our strategic plan for visual and performing arts that we have our task force working on, and we'll bring forward a number of items in our special education, including our assistive technology plan and professional learning plans for, specifically including transition, inclusion, and differentiation. And then during the summer, we'd bring forward our FICMAT Technology Report Action Plan. Our K-12 assistant supes would present parent and family engagement strategies. We will bring forward our discussions, I don't know if it'll be actually in a planned format, but the work we've been doing with our Institutes of Higher Education around teacher education programs and kind of realigning our needs with the teacher education programs. We will bring forward a plan for our work with the Center for Lifelong Learning at Santa Barbara City College. In August, we would have an assessment of, kind of in response to what the two public speakers were, an assessment of demographics, school boundaries, district policies and practices regarding diversity and demographics in our neighborhood schools, and also an assessment of communications across the district with all stakeholders, and our communication plan would also come forward in August. In September, we'd bring forward our learning management system, where you're actually going to get a look at what is proving to be the most popular one so far with 50% of our secondary schools, and we'd also And we'd also bring forward our, a description of how all of our schools have developed a process for no student being anonymous in the schools. And then finally, in December, our cultural proficiency assessments would have been completed by all of our schools, and they would have provided input into the district cultural proficiency plan, which we presented sometime during the first quarter of 2014. Knowing all of that, I thought of two ways to bring this forward, in relationship to the strategic plan. One could be that at each one of these moments, I could, as part of this, say, well, in our strategic plan, we have identified 19 items to work on during this calendar year. This is, we've completed, this is the third item that we've completed. In every one of these, we will be back to you with evaluation data as to its effectiveness in relationship to its intent. So we could do that every month, or, or twice a year, or three times a year, I could just bring forward, here's all the stuff that we're working on, give you kind of a generic progress report, since you'll be getting more specific things in those months. So I, any guidance or that you'd like to bring forward? I'm interested in hearing your thoughts regarding that.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Board, thoughts or direction?
I will actually just say that because the strategic plan is a document that we really spent all year working on, I would not mind it coming back in parts on a monthly basis, just because I think that it's a new document, the community is eager to hear what comes out of it, and so many of the questions that we had lingering after the strategic plan is, well, what are the little plans within the strategic plan and what's happening? So I think that if it was done in a concise way on a monthly basis, I would be open to that. Dr. Bass?
I was going to say the same thing. I always look at a strategic plan as a living document that continues to grow, and sometimes it needs to be revised and looked at differently. And you may even find that through the whole process.
I'm certain we will.
Yeah. So I think it would be great to, to kind of think about it that way and bring it back on a monthly basis and say, here's, here are my struggles, here are the things that we're actually doing really well, and here are the things we're challenged with. That would be really helpful.
Okay.
Ms. Parker?
My only question mark with that is that I'm, we're really, I think, hearing that the community wants to be involved. And, and I almost think that we need some special times where we're just focusing on the strategic plan for, for us to, to tell the community, you know, you don't need to come every month, but, you know, once a quarter, we're going to have a summary of some sort. And it's maybe a little bit bigger than a five-minute item at the end of a meeting, which is just, you know, a quick update. So that's just another thing that's percolating through my head that you might want to think about.
Mr. Hearn?
Yeah, I, I sort of think the same way. I'm a big believer in workshops. I'd rather see more items in a workshop and less frequency, but have more in-depth and time for us to really discuss it. So include some types of workshops, maybe two or three during whatever the, the next year is, but give us a couple hours where we can really dig into depths in some of the topics. The topics you think are the most important. That is what I'm thinking.
Dr. Bass?
Perhaps somewhere in the middle. And, and that's just a suggestion because I think one of the things that I see is that certain items get, you know, pushed aside and you forget sort of the importance because it's happening way after the fact. And I've seen that happen. Been involved in strategic planning myself and, and looking, and, you know, my current work, we are guided by a strategic plan. And when we do not look at that on a regular basis, we push it to the side. We think, oh, it's not that important, or it was at, at the moment in time, but then we forget about it. So I think sometimes having that on a regular basis and coming back to us and, and, and these are public meetings where the public is invited to come and talk and listen and in comment. And so that provides an opportunity for public to do that. I totally get that sometimes the public doesn't always want to wait till close to 10 to be here and listen to this, but that is always an opportunity to do that, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we don't have any consent agenda items to return to. We've already talked about coming events. Board, are there any future agenda items you'd like to see?
Not an agenda item, but Mimi, Novus thinks it's Wednesday, so I got kicked off Novus at nine o'clock. Yeah.
Yeah, so it's the 23rd.
Okay, yeah, Eastern time. All right, thanks. All right. So with nothing to return to and no future agenda items, I'd like to close today's meeting. Thank you.